Okay, everyone, we're about to get started. If you could find your seats, silence your cell phones as I'm doing. Greatly appreciate it. And if we can close the back door and the side doors for me, also greatly appreciated.
Oh, thank you. Trace, we missed you last week also.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. We are on the record. Today is Wednesday, the 20th day of September in the year 2023. This is a regular meeting of the Jersey City Municipal Council. We had a scheduled 6:00 PM start. The clock on my cellphone is showing 6:04 PM. And we have a roll call for the commencement of this meeting. Councilperson Ridley.
Yeah.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Yeah.
Councilperson Bajiano. Councilperson Saleh. Councilperson Solomon.
Here.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Present.
Councilperson Dejees.
Here.
Councilperson Rivera will be absent for the entirety of the meeting, and Council President Waterman.
Yeah.
We have eight council members in attendance at 6:04 PM. Can we kindly rise for a moment of silence, please? Thank you very much. On behalf of Council President Waterman and the members of the municipal council in accordance with the New Jersey Public Laws of 1975, Chapter 231, the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the posting on the bulletin board of the first floor of City Hall, the annual notice, which is the schedule of meetings and caucuses of the municipal council for the calendar year 2023, and filed in the office of the city clerk on Thursday, December 15, 2022. In addition, at its time for its preparation, the agenda of this meeting was similarly disseminated on Friday, September 15, 2023, at 5:25 PM, to the mayor, municipal council, business administrator, corporation council, and local newspapers, and posted on the city's website, so I can certify as to our total compliance with the Sunshine Law. Hey, council members. We have one order of business to handle before we move on to our regular order of business. We have two resolutions that we discussed briefly at the caucus meeting, two late items, and I'll read them into the record. Item 10.30, Resolution 23-741 is a resolution authorizing the award of a contract to absolute fire protection for the lease purchase of six E1 Typhoon apparatus through the Houston-Gavelston area council cooperative purchasing system for the Department of Public Safety Division of Fire. Item 10.31, Resolution 23-742 is a resolution of the municipal council of the City of Jersey City expressing its request that the administration engage the Jersey City Board of Education in negotiations for an agreement to share a portion of the annual service charge established by the financial agreement between the City of Jersey City and Bayfront Partners 32 Urban Renewal LP with the Board of Education. Council members, I need a motion to add items. If I can just read them, if I can just read this motion into the record. Motion to add items 10.30, Resolution 23-741, and 10.31, Resolution 23-742 to the agenda. Motion was made by Councilperson Saleh. May I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Councilperson Ridley?
Yes.
Starting to get it. On the motion to add items 10.30 and 10.31, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Uh.
Councilperson Gilmore. Councilperson Dejees.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman. Motion carries eight zero with Councilperson Rivera absent to add items 10.30 and 31 to the agenda. If we can just close that back door for me, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you. Onto our first reading ordinances. Item 3.1, City Ordinance 23-095 is a franchise ordinance granting permission to FD Monitor LLC, its successors, and assigns to make private improvements in both the, in both Monitor Street and Maple Street, public rights of way adjacent to the property located at 62-68 Monitor Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, also known on a tax map of the City of Jersey City as Block 15802, Lot 37. Item 3.2, City Ordinance 23-096 is an ordinance of the municipal council of the City of Jersey City adopting an amendment to the Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plan to mandate affordable housing. Item 3.3, City Ordinance 23-097 is an ordinance of the City of Jersey City and the County of Hudson, New Jersey approving the execution of an amended, restated water service franchise and service agreement between the city and the Jersey City Municipal Utilities Authority to increase the payments to the city. And finally, item 3.4, City Ordinance 23-098, an ordinance approving a tax exemption and authorizing a financial agreement regarding Lafayette Village pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law NJSA 48:20-1 Exec. Council members are going to be taking a vote on items 3.1 through 3.4. Councilperson Ridley.
Um. Council President, can I just be heard on item 3, very quickly? Councilpersons, item 3.2, which is ordinance 23-096, that's the municipal, ordinance of the municipal council adopting an amendment, Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plan. I am recommending that the council withdraw this from the agenda. There are a number of aspects of this ordinance that do not comply with legal form, including requirements imposing affordable housing obligations on property owners without any kind of benefits, which is very clear law in the state of New Jersey. There are also some procedural issues, which would include the fact that it has not been referred to the planning board, which is required for any amendments to Section 187 of the City Code, anything affecting the municipal land use law. This present matter, we've adopted, we've adopted a policy that proposed ordinances be sent first to the planning board for review, so that changes can be incorporated, and then the proposed ordinance can be introduced to the council on first reading. Any meaningful changes that would come back from the planning board to this ordinance would require a reintroduction anyway. So at this time, I'm going to be recommending that the council withdraw this matter. The administration and the law department will work with the councilmen and the entire council to draft something that is going to be, stand up the legal scrutiny, that's going to get us to the policy goal of increasing affordable housing in the city.
Okay. Go ahead. Anybody else want to say? But wait, before we go any further, I see everyone's coming in, and I see the union is here. So could you guys come in, coming all the way? You can see there's not many seats here, so everybody got to squeeze in together today. Say hi to your neighbor. That's it. Okay? Just do that. And I would ask everybody, once you in here, to please be quiet, because we can't hear. Like when you, when you yell and you scream and you cheer, we can't hear at that point, because, you know, this wasn't built, you know, to hear that clear in this room. So that's why we ask everyone, please don't say anything, so we can definitely hear what's going on, because I'm quite sure people press their way out, so they can speak to this council, so they could be heard. So I would ask everybody to respect everyone, all right, and just wait till everyone have their proper turn to speak, and we'll listen. Okay, so come on in.
And if there's not enough room in the chambers, I can put the speaker on in the lobby for anyone that cannot fit in the chambers. So just let me know if I need to put that back speaker on in the lobby. I'll do so right now.
Put it on, Sean. Put it on, Sean.
Will do. Will do.
Okay. Okay, don't yell. We got it. That's why I said, I don't need nobody to yell out. We do this every two weeks. Okay, don't worry. You just want to make sure as many people can get in the room or in the room.
I just want to test. Can you hear me out there in the lobby? Testing, one, two, three, four. Can anybody hear me out there in the lobby? Can somebody go out there and just let me know if the mic is on, if the speaker is on? Any volunteers? We have a ton of, we're good. Thank you.
Chris is back there.
Thank you. We're good. All right, council members.
Could we close it? You want the door closed or open, Sean? How you want it?
Yeah, can we close the door, the back door, since we have the lobby speaker on?
Okay. And we ask you to be quiet in the audience, please, so we can hear.
Appreciate your cooperation, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Sean.
Yes, councilman.
All right, 3.2. First of all, we were going to approve this tonight and then send it to the planning board. And then, as a matter of fact, I have been asking planning to work with us on this for over a year with the Affordable Housing Task Force. They suggested 5%, and we are suggesting 10%. Introduce the first ordinance, introduce it tonight, and let the people speak on this.
They won't speak. Rich is not second reading.
So, I mean, all the guys can speak on it there.
So, so council, just following up with what Peter said. The administration just wants to send it to the planning board to make sure we have the accurate and legal language, because if we have to make substantial changes, we'll be back to square one anyway. So we're going to work with the councilmen on and accomplish this. We're just looking to make sure we get it right.
Can we have a commitment that within two weeks, we can have a first read of this, possibly?
Have to check what the, the calendar dates are for the planning board, but.
Next meeting at least, we, we don't totally lose sight of it, and you know, it's a great idea, and I think it was worked on by a lot of people. They worked very hard, and bringing affordability to that area is a priority.
The planning board's been notified for a year now.
But we have to, procedurally, I think we, we have to refer it to the planning board. I mean, the administration could, but we have to either amend 3.1 to include that referral, uh, 3.2, excuse me, 3.2 here, or I guess we would have to introduce a resolution to do so. Is, I believe that's right, but can confirm.
I, yes, that would be correct. And I think the city, because we had had some cases in the last couple of years that you'll probably recall, where the city was dinged for lack of a better term for failure to comply with the planning board policy and the referral policy. I think just for, one, efficiency sake, two, I want to make sure that this is done right, correctly, the first time. We do want to get affordable housing built, and I think we want to make sure this is done efficiently and correctly, number one. Number two, there is, there is also a 45-day requirement to turn around for the planning board, so I think, you know, the law department, I think the administration will work with everybody to make sure this is done as quickly as everybody is willing to put pen to paper on this.
What I'm saying is, can, can we either, before we get to the resolutions by the end of the night, add as a late item a resolution referring this to the planning board? So we wouldn't introduce it as a first reading, but we would formally refer it. That gives 45 days to work on it, but hopefully.
Wait a minute. Hold on, hold on.
Come on, you can't be yelling here.
Listen, we, we need the door closed back there, because there is a capacity limit in the council chambers, and I do have the lobby speaker on. So you could take the chairs and sit in the lobby if you can't fit in the council chambers. But in order for us to conduct our business, we need everyone to keep their conversations at a low or outside at a minimum. Thank you.
Correct. You're correct. We can have somebody in legal draft it between now and the, at the end of the speakers.
I just want to make sure Councilman Bajiano is comfortable with that, because what we're talking about is not introducing the ordinance, but we would formally vote on the referral to planning board tonight, which has to happen anyway. It has to be referred to planning board. It just means when it comes back to us, it's a first reading, not a second reading.
As I said, for a year, we've been trying to deal with them. As long as they come back to us right away, John, not the, you know.
Yeah, this mandates that they have to hear it within 45 business days.
Right.
And we have three weeks in between meetings, so it might plan, the planning board may meet before that.
If they don't hear it within 45 days, we as a council can take action.
Yes.
So we do, we do have to give them 45 days.
As long as they come back in the 45 days.
And Mr. Clerk, I will draft the late ad. I will send it to you shortly, and that can.
Well, what, once you draft it, we have to add it.
Yes.
And then we have to vote to add it.
Yes.
Just so you know.
Yes.
Okay. We, yeah, we have some thought. All right, with that being said, do I have?
Oh, wait, no, go do that first, and then we can.
Do I have a, are we looking to motion to withdraw?
Yes.
Item 3.2?
Then add the.
So it was a motion to withdraw item 3.2 from the agenda?
Second.
Hold on. Motion was made by Council President Waterman, seconded by Councilperson Saleh. On the motion to withdraw item 3.2 from the agenda, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Sean, as I said, you know, we've been trying to get plan, the planning board to do something. As long as they come back to us within 45 days or before, it should be way shorter than 45 days. I'll go along with it. But I want this taken care of, and I want it done. And so does, I think, believe the rest of the council.
And you vote on the motion?
I'll say aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Very supportive of this measure by Councilman Bajiano, and I promise to work with everyone to make sure it doesn't die on the vine, that it comes back. With that, I vote aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
And just to clarify procedurally, say it again, we have a commitment from the administration. This is going to advance tonight. We sent it to the planning board. The difference is related to whether it's a first reading or a second reading when it comes back. But I want to thank Councilman Bajiano and the Journal Square Neighborhood Association for working collaboratively to move this forward. They have correctly pointed out that you have tens of thousands of units coming to Journal Square without any affordable or very few affordable at the moment, and, and this will create a requirement to ensure that future developments have them, which is why we want to work together to get it over the finish line. So with that, I'll vote aye on the amendment or on the motion.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejees.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman. Motion carries eight zero to withdraw item 3.2 from the agenda. So council members.
Hold on, Sean. Um, with regards to 3.1, I want to make a motion to, I guess, either table or withdraw.
It wouldn't be table, it would be withdraw.
Okay, withdrawn, because at first I was under the, I know this used to be Ward F, and now it is Ward A, but this was something, the building went up before the district changed, and I didn't personally have a opportunity to meet with anyone, and there were some, I guess, some instance on, is this beneficial, or is we pretty much giving away space for nothing? So I want to make a motion to, to withdraw, just so we can have more time to understand exactly what our best options as a city is. Also, you got to remember, they said the other night, it's only five feet. It's actually 295 square feet, taking city property, and they should pay for it.
Yes, agree.
So, right now, I have a motion by Councilperson Gilmore to withdraw item 3.1 from the agenda. May I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Councilperson Solomon. On the motion to withdraw item 3.1 from the agenda, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejees. And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero to withdraw item 3.1 from the agenda. Okay, council members, so I'm going to be taking a vote on items 3.3 through 3.4. Again, that's 3.3 to 3.4. Councilperson Ridley.
Aye for introduction.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye for introduction.
Councilperson Bajiano.
We'll say no on 3.3, and the reason is, last time they did this, they increased our water rates, and people are tired of seeing the cost of water in the city. And 3.4, I'm going to abstain.
Councilperson Saleh.
Is there an explanation for 3.3 that we could talk about, or?
It should be pulled. We introduced it at the caucus, and we agreed that the financial advisor, the bond council, and MUA will be here at the next caucus to discuss it before final.
Okay. I just want to put on the record, I don't agree with it being 40 years, but I'll do it for introduction, because you guys are still in negotiation, so aye for those two.
Councilperson Solomon.
Um, I'm going to say no on 3.3, yes on 3.4. We'll keep working on 3.3 if it does advance, but it's a huge long-term commitment. I want to make sure we have every detail squared away, and, and again, we're not sacrificing the now for the long term, and future councils, the future city, 20, 30, 40 years from now, is, is taking care of through this.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Um, so, so John, I was positioned on 3.3, well, the administration position on 3.3 is, um, it's, it's a work in, it's, it's because, I mean, it's a lot of uncertainty, so I just want the commitment from the administration that we will continue to work to, and my primary concern, I've been having a host of issues with Viola and MUA with regards to rates and all this other stuff, so I just want to be clear that there has to be more dialogue, there has to be more transparency as it relates to what is exactly going on here.
The, the negotiators and MUA will be at the next caucus, you know, however we proceed tonight, and they're going to discuss it, but the length, the, the amount, all that stuff, we can, we can still discuss.
Okay, okay. So I'll, um, in light of that, I'll vote aye for, for introduction.
Councilperson Dejees.
Vote aye for introduction, but obviously share the same concerns about 3.3. We'll have questions prepared for the next caucus.
And Council President Waterman. Okay. Item 3.3 is introduced 6, 0, um, excuse me, 6, 2, with council members Bajiano and Solomon voting no. Item 3.4 is introduced 7, 0, 1, with Councilperson Bajiano abstaining. Onto our second reading ordinances. First second reading ordinances. Item 4.1, City Ordinance 23-077 is an ordinance amending Chapter 84 alcoholic beverages and cannabis to amend regulation of cannabis establishments and cannabis distributors. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, please come up to the podium and state your name for the record.
Jeff Kaplowitz. I'm a member of the Cannabis Control Board. They asked the council to postpone this, mainly because the members of the Cannabis Board were never informed or asked for our advice on how to move forward with cannabis. Also, serious issue is with the item that says that any legally non-conforming use in Jersey City can be utilized as cannabis and can't be denied. That will basically nullify our zoning ordinance. It will nullify our redevelopment zones, because if it's a permitted use, it could wind up next to a school. It could wind up in the middle of a residential zone. So I, I request that you postpone this and the next item on cannabis. Ask the Cannabis Board, where we're sitting here and listening to the applications and see where the problems are. The legal department has not contacted us. No one has asked for our opinion. We'd like to help with make this a better ordinance. Thank you.
Is there still a public hearing on this ordinance? Any other member wishing to be heard?
Well, council, you know how I feel about this.
We need your name, sir. Sorry.
Frank Robertson. Yeah, we have a problem with this. I told you from the first day, and I actually spoke to Commissioner Kaplowitz and told him, because he didn't know this was coming up, because, of course, you guys didn't listen to where I said that now it's retail, so you could actually open this in any place that's retail. I actually said this to you guys last year, so I'm glad he came when I told him what it was, so, and also we had a problem with the 600-foot rule. Now, for me, I wouldn't care if you tabled it, but I'd rather you vote on it, vote it down, and then re-amend it somehow with the 600-foot rule are still intact, because 21-053 states that every cannabis establishment should be 600 feet. And the reason I'm telling you that, just like I told Councilwoman Prinzieri, it's like the Yankees in the, in the Mets. You can't take the Yankees, and they can't play in Queens. The Mets can't play in the Bronx. The reason why is because it's just, and she knows, she knows because she's an A-fans, and, um, so it's, for us, it just seems that you guys are changing the rules again, and no one is open. Now, when someone opens, I think, then you can, guys can change it, but you're changing the rules, as Councilman Gilmore said. The rules, no one's opening, you're changing, saying, you know what? We're going to just say $2,500 that we paid last year, first in time. Now, everybody else that comes up doesn't have to pay that $2,500. And then, Councilman Gilmore asked Matt Ward, how about the people that actually paid the $2,500? He said, what did he tell you? He told you it's non-refundable. So we paid the $2,500, the people that's coming in that didn't do their business, they, they do not have to pay the $2,500. So I just want to understand, again, you guys tabling it, because you know I was here. I was pretty nice to you guys. We tapered from August. This is the second reading. All I would say, me, I'd rather you voted down and then rewrite it, and make sure that you have the 600-foot rule, because I wouldn't open the business if somebody was across the street from me. Anybody in here that would open a business wouldn't have, I wouldn't sell cannabis there, and then somebody's right there, because that's not good business. And your rule, the reason we got our spot is because your rule said 600 feet. So I have a buffer around my business, so that I don't have to worry about someone taking my clients. This is what business is, and most of you guys, I don't know who own business, but owning a business is tough, especially when you got a competitor right across the street from you, and your rule says 21-053, 600 feet. Abide by your law.
Thank you.
Is this still a public hearing?
Evening, council. My name is Anna Tolentino. I'm actually here.
I, I couldn't hear you, ma'am. Sorry. Can you, can?
Good evening to everybody. My name is Anna Tolentino, and I'm actually here on behalf of Andrew Washington, in support of that, but I also was just denied for a cannabis license, and I just want to say, and I want to piggyback off of what Frank Robertson just said, the regulations are not being applied uniformly. So as he just stated, you have certain things in place that are not applied to everybody, and it seems to be a standard that's not being followed. So if you, are, if you're going to vote tonight, that's fine, but I think somebody needs to go back and look at what the regulations are, and to see if they're being applied uniformly. That's all I want to say on this.
Thank you.
So much.
Still a public hearing? Sir, your name?
Good evening. My name is Osbert Orduña. All of you in the city council know who I am already. I'm here in strict opposition to ordinance 77 and 78. The buck stops with you. You are the. You are the body that is the regulatory body in Jersey City. It's 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 just a disgrace to hear that the Cannabis Control Board, the entity that you guys have tasked with actually reviewing applications, was never consulted by the Law Department, shame on the Law Department for doing that. That's irresponsible, and that is reprehensible conduct. How are you going to think that the Law Department knows more about the cannabis regulations and the process than the very people that you, the city council, have tasked with that duty? It is them, they're the ones that review the applications, that then send the recommendation to you, the city council. You count on what they put in their review, but this Law Department, they didn't think that their opinion mattered? That's reprehensible, and that's negligent conduct. On top of that, you have the Planning Board that has taken an ordinance that you guys took an enormous amount of time to create, twenty-one dash zero five three, and put their own spin on it, pulling off permits, they say, is the final step in the process. Nowhere is that found in the ordinance, the buck stops with each of you here. You are the city council, you are responsible, this is your legacy as well. We cannot have Jersey City become the city of special interests and of special lobbyists that work with different groups to get their agenda across. This is about equity and equality for all businesses. I ask everyone in this room that if this ordinance seventy-seven and seventy-eight pass, to hold each one of you accountable on election day as well, because you are responsible. It is a shame that an ordinance that was created to provide equity and equality in this city is now being rewritten and and a term such as holistic. Holistic is being used as the determining factor as to who gets uh uh a six hundred foot rule applied or not. That's ridiculous, that doesn't exist in municipal land use law, that's a made-up term. That's the same term that gets used in the college recruitment process, so that the haves can get their their acceptance letter, and the have-nots get relegated to other places. It is your responsibility as responsible elected officials that represent this city and all of the businesses and residents of this city to vote no tonight. Vote no and do the right thing. I yield my time.
Thank you.
This is still a public hearing on this ordinance, any member of the public wishing to be heard?
Before we go any further, the middle aisle here, could you guys just spread against the wall, because I have to keep that middle aisle clear? All right, just go on the side of the walls. That aisle has to be clear by the doorway.
Before you speak, if you can just spell your name, I'm not gonna start the timer until you start speaking, and not spelling your name is not counted.
You have to, they have to go, it's space back there this way, because that door has to be clear. I'm already over capacity, and I know it. And I really don't wanna put nobody out, so that's why I'm trying to just make rooms, everybody can get in here.
And your name?
My name is Sarah Russell.
Don't yell out.
Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry.
Please don't yell out. Please don't yell out, I'm trying to get everybody in here.
Sarah Russell?
Sarah Russell, R U S S E L L.
Thank you.
I'm a tenant and cannabis entrepreneur at thirty-five twenty-three Kennedy Boulevard in the Heights, business called Benedict Supply. We have spent the last three years on a mission to educate our neighborhood and show the city the good cannabis can bring when introduced correctly. I have signed and broken multiple leases in Jersey City until I finally found something that was safely in the zone, more than six hundred feet away from any known cannabis establishments, and has a landlord who has treated us fairly. We've been paying rent on this particular spot for almost a year, and this doesn't include rent paid on previous locations. We've met with our neighborhood association multiple times, answered their questions, came up with the plan to give back in a meaningful way. We have their full support, we have been volunteering hours of time, donating money, candy, toys, backpacks, and showing up as we face as the face of our hopeful business. We have attended all the Office of Diversity and Inclusion events and job fairs, we've hired every attorney and professional required by this city to make sure we're doing everything right and according to the law. We have been using every resource available to us to either get our business off the ground or give back to Jersey City. Our team has jumped through every hoop in front of us to join this industry that I'm so passionate about in the greatest city in New Jersey, a place that we consider our community. At our Cannabis Control Board meeting, the community showed up to support our business, the local neighborhood association president spoke on our behalf, competitor businesses advocated for us, and we received unanimous and enthusiastic approval from the CCB. Even though we wasted no time submitting our planning board application, it took six months and four meetings for our case to be heard. Once again, the community showed up in support, and we received unanimous approval. That was almost a month ago, and still our paperwork has not reached the city council, unfortunately. Yet, I'm grateful to this council and to the city for not yielding to the stigma and for using the time and resources to outline a transparent process. Now this evening, you have the decision to vote on updated ordinance outlining a new licensing process. It is nice to see you simplifying it, thank you. That said, my goal tonight is to shed light on our experience, if it helps your decision-making at all. This has not been easy, as an entrepreneur in the midst of the process, I urge you, please do not vote yes tonight unless you actually really understand the entire process and you believe it's the best way forward. If it's not clear to you as facilitators and as the governing body of this city, businesses are gonna be even more confused, and the industry will suffer as a result. If you believe there's room for improvement, I urge you, please take the time to get it right. Every time the process changes, it costs businesses and owners time and money that could be used for betterment instead. Thank you for your time and all that you do.
Thank you.
This is still a public hearing on this ordinance, any other member of the public wishing to be heard, please come up to the podium and state your name for the record.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to close the public hearing by Council President Waterman, and seconded by Councilperson Saleh. On city ordinance twenty-three dash zero seven seven, on the motion to close the public hearing, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano. Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejees.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero to close the public hearing on city ordinance twenty-three dash zero seven seven. A final consideration.
Wait a minute, Sean.
Yes, um, I I-
Um, I think what they wanna do is pretty much just kinda carry this the next two, but they wanna close session. Okay, but we wanted to do it after the public hearing.
Yep.
So if you want, I I, my suggestion is to table the ordinance after the close of the public hearing.
Can we carry it, or?
It, at this point, you have to table after the close of the public hearing.
Got it, okay, so motion.
So motion to table
four point one.
Oh, hold on, table ordinance twenty-three dash zero seven seven after the close of the public hearing.
Second.
So we have a motion made by Councilperson Saleh, seconded by Councilperson Dejees. On the motion to table city ordinance twenty-three dash zero seven seven after the close of the public hearing, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye, but also with note that if we are going to table this canyon ordinance, we should also make sure we have a resolution on the next council meeting to extend the moratorium, so we have a little bit more time to consider this, and then also if we can have a closed session to discuss some of the things that we could not discuss at caucus because of pending litigation.
Agree.
Yes, now, if the council wants to vote to authorize a closed session tonight, we would need to prepare that resolution. We would, under the sunshine law, we would need to know the date and time when that closed session would take place before the council adjourns tonight.
The Corporation Council, I just wanna just bring-
Go ahead.
To your attention, that not every item is up for closed session under our Orkner Act, so I just wanna make sure that we're able to go into closed session on this particular subject.
As we will consult with, we will review, I do know, as Councilperson Prinzieri said, there is pending litigation, does not involve the city uh per se, but there is pending litigation.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. So we're in the process of voting to table city ordinance twenty-three dash zero seven seven after the close of the public hearing. I have an aye from Councilperson Ridley and Prinzieri, Councilperson Bajiano. Can we make sure that your mic is on? Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejees.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero with Councilperson Rivera absent to table city ordinance twenty-three dash zero seven seven after the close of the public hearing. Onto our next second reading ordinance, item four point two, city ordinance twenty-three dash zero seven eight is an ordinance adopting amendments to the Land Development Ordinance regarding definition section three forty-five dash six and cannabis establishments and distributors, section three forty-five dash sixty point five. This is a public hearing on this ordinance, any member of the public wishing to be heard, please come up to the podium and state your name for the record.
Frank Robertson. Again, I wanna tell everyone in here, if you notice, the city council capped it at forty-eight, forty-eight dispensaries in Jersey City.
Frank, talk to him about it.
Okay, I, I, they can hear me, forty-eight dispensaries, the city council has capped Jersey City. And uh, Newark has capped it at five, Bayonne has two, Newark is double the size of uh Jersey City, and the city council has voted and put in a resolution, forty-eight dispensaries. Now, everybody in here, do you think that we have forty-eight dispensaries in Jersey City? Forty-eight, this is what the uh city has.
Wrong ordinance, it's, this one's a different ordinance.
No, no, but I'm actually telling you, this land, it's land, it's land use, so actually the uh uh Planning Board doesn't have anything, but you're saying at it's forty-eight dispensaries, am I right, Councilman?
We're on four point two. We're on four point two right now.
Yeah, that's right, four point two.
That's land use. Doesn't have to do with anything with forty-eight.
Is that land use? Is that land use?
The last ordinance was four point one, it dealt with the cap, which we just tabled, so please speak about-
Well, I'm, I'm, the land use, the land use is part of that, and if it's forty-eight, you guys voted to cap it at forty-eight. So I'm gonna speak what I wanna speak, and I'm gonna tell you that you voted forty-eight. So even if you don't like what I'm saying, I'm gonna let you know that it's-
Less respect, everybody, okay?
He's telling me that-
But he's trying to tell you the difference to ordinance, that's all, just speak to the ordinance, that's all he's saying.
Well, I'm just saying land, it's land use, and that's part of the planning, am I right, ma'am?
Just speak, just speak.
Okay, so that's why it says forty-eight, they're they're trying to say that we need forty-eight dispensaries in Jersey City. Forty-eight, so I mean, I don't know if you want this right next to your house, because this order is also the other order says that you could actually put it in any retail, which means that you could put it at any store. Anywhere that's a retail, you could actually have it there. So that's what I'm saying, and I'm telling you that forty-eight is crazy in Jersey City.
Thank you.
This is still a public hearing on this ordinance, and I see Jeff coming up to the podium.
Once again, Jeff Kaplowitz.
Jeff.
I would recommend tabling this along with the other ordinance, and sit down and really converse with the Cannabis Board members to get a better feel. Uh, I would also ask if you could introduce moratorium where uh, no more applications will be accepted by the Cannabis Board at this time. After the last time that uh the council was going to entertain changers, we had a huge amount of applications that came in. Now that they're in the pipeline, they have to be heard. With tonight's postponement, which I think is a good thing, to make sure that we get it right, uh, we'll probably see the same action of more applications that are kind of incomplete, that haven't met with the neighborhood groups and so forth, to like deal with it. So if you could postpone this, and also basically take a moratorium and instruct the Commerce Department not to accept any further applications until you figure this out. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Jeff.
This is still a public hearing on this ordinance, any member of the public still wishing to be heard?
Good evening, Osbert Raudunia. Uh, I want you guys to to hear something. This is from the January, excuse me, March twenty-second of twenty-twenty-two Planning Board hearing.
Request five cannabis permit to allow this establishment, I think it's a great location, uh, probably perfect for it, um, but that being said, I mean, to your, so for you, I guess, the portal just opened up at the state last week, right? May, what, fifteen?
Correct, that's that's my understanding, there there is a separate attorney handling the state portion of it, but thi- this is the first of three steps to get to the point where a license is issued, it's the Planning Board, local cannabis control, and then this this state license.
So the reason I played this little clip for you is, this is about municipal land use. This is about ordinance seventy-eight, which clearly is trying to change the process yet again, right? Where uh an entity can now say, yes, I'm gonna go to the Planning Board, no, I'm not, I I'm not gonna go to the Planning Board, yes, I'm gonna pay the twenty-five hundred, no, I'm not gonna pay the twenty-five hundred. What you are doing by changing this process less than a year from the time that you started the previous process is, guess what? You're causing irreparable harm to those of us that followed this process that you guys outlined, and by changing it, you're causing irreparable harm to our businesses. The, by opening up the city, Councilman Saleh, I know you're gonna say this was part of the the previous item, it's all interrelated, right? And so by saying that now the entirety of the city is is open versus the previous that was only a green zone, and by saying now that you can or or you may or may not have to go to the Planning Board, guess what you're doing? You're creating confusion, you're creating an uh uh uh, an opportunity for a clash, a class action litigation against the city by continuously changing this process yet again. All you're doing is opening the city up to litigation. Funds that should be going to our community programs, to Laverne's program, funds that should be going to the PAL, funds that should be going to after-school programs, to violence interruption programs like the Credible Messengers. Instead, the city's gonna be prepared to waste them and fill the pockets of yet another lawyer in litigation. Why? The time, the time to correct things is now. All you have to do, very simply done, is follow what you guys made an ordinance, what you guys turned into local law in twenty-one zero, twenty-one dash zero five three. It's that simple, you don't have to reinvent the wheel, you don't have to create something new. What you have works if you ensure that the employees that work for the city are actually following the rules that you guys wrote. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is still a public hearing on ordinance twenty-three dash zero seven eight, any member of the public still wishing to be heard, please come up to the podium and state your name for the record.
Motion.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing on city ordinance twenty-three dash zero seven eight was made by Councilperson Waterman, seconded by Councilperson Saleh. On the motion to close the public hearing on city ordinance twenty-three dash zero seven eight, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
We're closing it. Closing the public hearing, aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejees.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman. Motion carries eight zero with Councilperson Rivera absent to close the public hearing on city ordinance twenty-three dash zero seven eight. Councilmembers, is it my understanding that we're going to be doing the same um, motion?
Um, I just-
Table city ordinance twenty-three dash zero seven eight?
Yes.
But, um, uh, Peter, legal perspective, can we do, can we not, can we not accept applications, can we?
He has a stand right now, the policy is, we're accepting the applications, we're holding them in a pair.
Holding them, yeah.
Yes, correct. I believe my understanding, there have been two submitted since the-
Yeah, that haven't been, okay.
That might have changed, don't hold me to that, but-
Be the same, because the deadline is near, right? Them six months, oh, okay, so it'll be the same process.
So who was making the motion to table city ordinance twenty-three dash zero seven eight after the close of the public hearing?
Second.
Motion was made by Council President Waterman, seconded by Councilperson Saleh. On the motion to table city ordinance twenty-three dash zero seven eight after the close of the public hearing, Councilperson Ridley. Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejees. And Council President Waterman. Motion to table city ordinance twenty-three dash zero seven eight after the close of the public hearing is approved eight zero with Councilperson Rivera absent. Onto our next second reading- Onto our next second reading ordinance, item four point three, city ordinance twenty-three day zero eight six, is an ordinance providing for various two thousand and twenty-three capital improvements by and in the city of Jersey City and the county of Hudson, the state of New Jersey, re-appropriating eleven million, seven hundred and thirty thousand in excess bond proceeds from various bond ordinances, not needed for their original, uh, purpose, excuse me, to finance the cost thereof. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard? Please come up to the podium and state your name for the record.
Motion.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing on city ordinance twenty-three day zero eight six was made by Councilperson, President, excuse me, Waterman, seconded by Councilperson Saleh. On the motion to close the public hearing on city ordinance twenty-three day zero eight six, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejees.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
Motion to close the public hearing on city ordinance twenty-three day zero eight six is approved eight zero with Councilperson Rivera absent. For final consideration and adoption of city ordinance twenty-three day zero eight six, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejees.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman. City ordinance twenty-three day zero eight six is adopted eight zero with Councilperson Rivera absent. Onto our next second reading ordinance, item four point four, city ordinance twenty-three day zero eight seven, is an ordinance supplementing chapter three thirty-two, vehicles and traffic, article three, parking, standing, and stopping, amending section three thirty-two dash twenty-two, parking prohibited at all times, to permit on-street parking on the west side of Baldwin Avenue between Route one thirty-nine and Washburn Street. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, please come up to the podium and state your name for the record.
Motion. Second.
Motion to close the public hearing on city ordinance twenty-three day zero eight seven was made by Council President Waterman, seconded by Councilperson Saleh. On the motion to close the public hearing on city ordinance twenty-three day zero eight seven, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejees.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman. City. The motion to close the public hearing on city ordinance twenty-three day zero eight seven is approved eight zero with Councilperson Rivera absent. For final consideration and adoption of city ordinance twenty-three day zero eight seven, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano. Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejees.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman. City ordinance twenty-three day zero eight seven is adopted eight zero with Councilperson Rivera absent. Onto our next second reading ordinance, item four point five, city ordinance twenty-three day zero eight eight, is an ordinance supplementing chapter three thirty-two, vehicles and traffic, article two, traffic regulations, amending section three thirty-two dash five, one-way streets, and section three thirty-two dash eight, prohibited right turns on red signal, and article three, parking, standing, stopping, amending section three thirty-two dash twenty-two, parking prohibited at all times, and section three thirty-two dash twenty-four, parking prohibited at certain hours on Academy Street between Tours Avenue and Van Ripen Street as part of the Bergen Square Capital Improvements Project. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member wishing to be heard, please come up to the podium and state your name for the record.
Motion.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing on city ordinance twenty-three day zero eight eight was made by Councilperson Saleh, seconded by Councilperson Ridley. On the motion to close the public hearing on city ordinance twenty-three day zero eight eight, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri. Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejees.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman. Motion to close the public hearing on city ordinance twenty-three day zero eight eight is approved eight zero with Councilperson Rivera absent. For final consideration and adoption of city ordinance twenty-three day zero eight eight, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejees.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
City ordinance twenty-three day zero eight eight is adopted eight zero with Councilperson Rivera absent. Onto our next second reading ordinance, item four point six, city ordinance twenty-three dash zero eight nine, is an ordinance supplementing chapter three thirty-two, vehicles and traffic, article two, traffic regulations, amending section three thirty-two dash eight, prohibited right turns on red signal, and article three, parking, standing, and stopping, amending section three thirty-two dash twenty-two, parking prohibited at all times on Duncan Avenue between Route one and nine and West Side Avenue. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard? Please come up to the podium and state your name for the record.
Motion.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing on city ordinance twenty-three day zero eight nine was made by Councilperson Saleh, seconded by Council President Waterman. On a motion to close the public hearing on twenty, on ordinance twenty-three day zero eight nine, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejees. And Council President Waterman. Motion to close the public hearing on city ordinance twenty-three day zero eight nine is approved eight zero with Councilperson Rivera absent. For final consideration and adoption of city ordinance twenty-three day zero eight nine, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Just want to thank our traffic and engineering departments for working with myself and the community on these road safety improvements for Duncan Avenue that will make them safer for pedestrians, cars, and everyone else who's using it. And we look forward to more coming in the future. Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejees.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
City ordinance twenty-three day zero eight nine is adopted eight zero with Councilperson Rivera absent. Onto our next second reading ordinance, item four point seven, city ordinance twenty-three day zero nine zero, is an ordinance supplementing chapter three thirty-two, vehicles and traffic, article nine, parking for the disabled of the Jersey City Code, designating reserved parking space at various locations throughout the city. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard? Please come up to the podium and state your name for the record.
Motion.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing on city ordinance twenty-three day zero nine zero was made by Council President Waterman, seconded by Councilperson Saleh. On the motion to close the public hearing on city ordinance twenty-three day zero nine zero, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
I had to step out.
I'm sorry, I, I can't see. Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejees.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman. Motion carries seven zero with council members Prinzieri and Rivera absent to close a public hearing on city ordinance twenty-three day zero nine zero. For final consideration and adoption of city ordinance twenty-three day zero nine zero, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri is still absent. Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejees.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman. City ordinance twenty-three day zero nine zero is adopted seven zero with council members Prinzieri and Rivera absent. Onto our next second reading ordinance, item four point eight, city ordinance twenty-three day zero nine one, is an ordinance rescinding ordinances seventeen dash one zero seven and twenty dash zero eight three, and terminating the tax exemption and financial agreement with C I C F two, Urban Renewal LLC. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard? Please come up to the podium and state your name for the record.
Motion.
Motion to close the public hearing on city ordinance twenty-three day zero nine one was made by Councilperson Saleh, seconded by Council President Waterman. On a motion to close the public hearing on city ordinance twenty-three day zero nine one, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri is still absent. Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore. Councilperson Dejees.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman. Motion to close the public hearing on city ordinance twenty-three day zero nine one is approved seven zero with council members Prinzieri and Rivera absent. For final consideration and adoption of city ordinance twenty-three day zero nine one, Councilperson Prin, um, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri is still absent. Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Just want to thank the administration and Mayor Fuller for rescinding this tax abatement. You know, it's important to hold people accountable. And just want to thank, thank you guys for doing this. We need more of this. That I vote aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejees.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
City ordinance twenty-three day zero nine one is adopted seven zero with council members Prinzieri and Rivera absent. Onto our next second reading ordinance, item four point nine, city ordinance twenty-three day zero nine two, is an ordinance amending chapter three oh four, taxation, section thirty-two, guidelines for the expenditure of funds of the Jersey City Municipal Code. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard? Please come up to the podium and state your name for the record.
Motion.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing was made by Council President Waterman on city ordinance twenty-three day zero nine two, seconded by Councilperson Saleh. On the motion to close the public hearing on city ordinance twenty-three day zero nine two, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon. Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejees.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman. Motion carries seven zero to close the public hearing on city ordinance twenty-three day zero nine two with council members Prinzieri and Rivera absent. For final consideration and adoption of city ordinance twenty-three day zero nine two, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Want to say, um, you know, this is great work from the Law Department, Councilwoman Dejees and the council. Now affordable housing trust fund dollars can be used for low-income rental assistance, and you know, this is just the beginning. Thanks to, um, the right-to-council ordinance we passed recently as well. And with that, I vote aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Glad to see this move forward, and I vote aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejees. And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
City ordinance twenty-three day zero nine two is adopted seven zero with council members Prinzieri and Rivera absent. Onto our next second reading ordinance, item four point ten, city ordinance twenty-three day zero nine three, is an ordinance approving a thirty-year tax exemption for a mixed-use residential project and authorizing a financial agreement with Bayfront Partners Thirty-two Urban Renewal LP pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law, NJSA forty-eight colon twenty dash one exact. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, please come up to the podium, and I see Phil Carrington.
Good evening. My name is Phil Carrington. Just a simple question. You're given thirty years tax abatement. Is that correct? No way in this unless it's written somewhere else that is stated that will include affordable rent. Given the rising costs of rent and the amount of people who can't afford rent, if you continue to give tax abatement, then I need to see in writing that there is affordable rent. Simple question. Is there affordable rent included in this tax?
Yes.
Yes.
That's the answer. Thank you.
Hey, this is still a public hearing on the ordinance?
Good job. Hold them to their word. Make sure affordable is in there. Make sure people of Jersey City is working there. We got too much development going on in this city, and the people of this city are not working. Look back here. They're not working. I, I, I have done a lot of affordable projects, been a partner with them. We try to make sure that we have Jersey City people working. Mr. Gilmore, our councilman there, there was a young man here that had problems with his landlord, and he told you, he gave his landlord forty-four thousand dollars. You remember that? You know what that man worked for? With them people back there. That's why he was able to make that money and pay that rent. Because he was a union worker and started with these people. He killed me.
Now. Hold it. Wait a minute. Wait, wait, wait. Y'all wasting her time. Every time y'all clap, y'all taking her time.
Born and raised in this city, came out of Duncan and got his life together, and these people gave him that job to pay his landlord forty-four thousand dollars. He wouldn't have been able to do that if he didn't have a job in, with that union back there. And it's a lot more of our young men had turned their lives around through that union. Through that union.
Y'all taking her time.
We needed, we have non-union jobs in unions. Nothing wrong with nuns. But we need both, and we need our people to work and to survive. What's going on now? We catching hell out here. We catching hell. So pay attention. Thank you.
Thank you, LeBron. Wait a minute. Go ahead, Sean.
So, so Jeff, before you speak, I just want to remind members of the public, I know that's a hot topic, and you've guys are very passionate about what we're talking about. But if you can hold your applause to the end of when the public, the person that's speaking, we greatly appreciate it, because what you're doing is you're taking away from their time, and my court reporter cannot, um, actually read the lips or hear the person speaking. So I greatly appreciate your cooperation. Jeff?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Kaplowitz. I'm a member of the Bayfront Advisory Board. I come tonight to ask you to vote and approve the tax abatement. Downtown in Journal Square has grown over the decades through tax abatements to transform Jersey City from a decaying city to a top-tier mid-city in America, but with no affordable housing. Mayor and council on behalf of the city of Jersey City embarked upon something very unique, purchased a hundred acres that was contaminated and remedied, remediated by Honeywell for the purpose of controlling how development would proceed. The main component was to assure that thirty-five percent of housing would be affordable housing. This has never been done before. Why is this unique? Is that real estate development has three approaches to financing. Either market rate housing, which is all private financing, affordable housing, which is government financing, or an eighty-twenty split. This is through public, private financing at eighty percent and government tax credits at twenty percent to finance the balance. With any program that has tax credits, there is a governmental component that requires a stable real estate tax base for a period of time. This is what tax abatements do. Tax abatements are not a bad thing if used properly, because private capital is the main component for development. But private capital is very conservative and demands a return on investment. Tax abatement is government's way of incentivizing for the investment in an area where there is no track, track record to guarantee returns on their investment. It was only a few years ago when I spoke with Bob Antonicello, who was going to be a guest speaker at Jersey City Summit about topics of hotspots to look at in the future of development. I asked him to mention Greenville. Since Bayfront was going to be the critical mass for development, he did so. As the first time anyone has mentioned that Greenville was a good place for development. And today we are seeing development that is happening there. But development has not created affordable housing even there. Bayfront is still the key component for that. Let me be perfectly clear. If there's no tax abatement for Bayfront, there'll be no affordable housing in Bayfront. Let me repeat that. No tax abatement, no affordable housing. Five years ago, council president, council president Waterman asked me this question. And I represent the interest of my community, Society Hill, and go beyond and represent the interest of Jersey City. My answer then was yes, and today it is still yes. I've been part of the advisory board that very few, few people have the privilege and opportunity to do, create a future neighborhood.
Thanks, Jeff.
Just give me, just a little, another paragraph. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay.
I got a line behind you.
I will.
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate it.
Sorry, Jeff, your time is up. When you're ready, sir.
All right. Good evening. Bill Matsakoudis, two oh six, Shorewood Court, West Jersey City. So good to be back in the city council chambers. Haven't been here in a while. See a packed house, speaking out on the issues. I stand, uh, come here tonight to speak strongly in favor of this tax abatement. If there was ever a tax abatement that deserved passes, it's this one. And I really uh, also wanted to come out because the history of Bayfront goes back quite a bit. Uh, back to my time when I sat in that chair as a corporation counsel, when we, underneath the Hili administration, sued Honeywell to clean up that land following in the footsteps of the ICO who sued initially, entering into this uh, uh, agreement with Honeywell for them to clean up the site and at that time to jointly develop it with ten percent affordable housing. And the Philip administration did something bold. They acquired the land and upped the stakes to thirty-five percent affordable housing, which is quite extraordinary to have thirty-five percent affordable housing on a hundred acre parcel on our city's west side where there's no development. It's land that was contaminated. It's land that's not developed. It's land that's providing substantial affordable housing. And crucially and importantly, it's land that now the city has a huge investment in. It's frankly a no-brainer to vote for this uh, abatement ordinance. And not only are we getting affordable housing out of it, but you heard uh, the first speaker talk about how it's also going to have a project labor agreement and union labor. So you're going to have skilled uh, people working on this with an apprenticeship program for local people working for good wages.
Taking his time.
So uh, thank you so much and have a great night. Hope you all vote yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
If you could just state your name for the record?
Hi, my name is Tom Hurley.
Dom?
Tom. T-O-M. Hurley. H-U-R-L-E-Y.
That's why people got to be quiet. It's hard to hear. It's really hard to hear.
People are laughing, but it's actually hard to hear up here when you're hearing a bunch of other conversations. Go ahead, Tom.
So if anyone that doesn't know, I'm the president of the Carpenters Local Union Two Fifty Three. I appreciate you affording me the time. I'm going to ask all my members and the affiliate members to give me the time and yield. You can applause when I'm finished.
Correct. Thank you.
So councilwoman uh, Mira Prinzieri and councilwoman Denise Ridley held a community meeting sometime ago on the west side. And in that community meeting, they unveiled the plans for the Bayfront. This has been a project that's been planning for years and they, the city's been talking about it. The mayor was in support of it. Has a lot of you up there sitting. You know, the issue that I have is, it, it resonates with me. I'm from the west side. So I, it holds a special place for me to see this property developed. It's where my mother got cancer when she worked on that site before it was demolished. I'd love to see it revitalized for the residents of the west side and give west side a well-lit four forty that they deserve with the amenities of shopping for seniors who spent their life in this community to be able to live and, and, and stay here. But moreover, to get my members a chance to work in this city. It seems like some people have gotten amnesia when it comes to Summit Avenue, when it comes to uh, Cottage Street, when it comes to areas like that, it's carte blanche. But when it comes to anything with union language, there's certain people that seem to not recognize the necessity of what gets them votes, what helps them in terms of what this taxpaying workers give back, the community dollars that stay here in this city when the union member goes to work, when they're from Jersey City, instead of out-of-state people coming here and taking the money and going back to where they come from. What about Jersey City, I ask? What about the hardworking women on that panel that worked so hard to see this vision come to light? What about the seniors that need the affordable housing? What about the working men and women? Are we forgotten? I ask that this city council, please, out of respect and my courtesy to you, pass this exemption to remember where we all came from, to remember what we all deserve for the future, not only of Jersey City, but the workers and the community. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Long time, long time, my friend. How are you? Patrick Kelleher, Hudson County Building Trades President, business agent, Local Twenty-Four. Councilpeople all know me, Denise Mira, Richie, Amy, Joyce, Yusef, James, Mr. Gilmore's not uh, at the table yet. But the conversation here today, this project is long awaiting. Like Denise and Mira got this program. This is all about projects. You heard what Ms. Webb said. We're the biggest contingency of getting organized labor. There's too much union. There is a lot of non-union stuff on this, in Jersey City. We're trying to change that. And the conversation with all these trades here today, if a kid don't pass the test, we have mechanisms to put them as a pre-trades woman or a pre-trades man. So we all done the right thing. So the conversation is, guys, we support the people who support you. Somebody forgot a long time ago who they came to me and it's about support. They got, go, so let's all do the right thing. Richie, let's do the right thing, my friend, okay? Don't forget it. Thank you. Matt.
Can I say something?
Matt. Matt.
Hi, my name is Diane Maxon, M-A-X-O-N, and I'm here representing Jersey City Together. I would first like to point out again that there would not be any land to build on if weren't for the efforts of our predecessor organization ICO. That is the group that sued Honeywell in order to affect the cleanup. And we have been involved in the development of Bayfront since the cleanup happened. We support this tax abatement that provides affordable housing. Affordable housing is one of the most pressing issues we have in this city. Frankly, I've lived here for forty years and the amount of development right now scares me because it seems to be taking us in a way I don't think most people want to go. Anyway, we don't support any tax abatements anywhere in Jersey City for any reason other than affordability at thirty-five percent minimum. And six.
Let us speak. Go ahead.
We also want to, to make sure that any pilot funds that are paid in lieu of taxes are distributed in the exact same way as property taxes are. So the school district does not have to suffer because of this abatement. And I think the, the kind and amount of people that are standing up for this abatement show that even though abatements have a bad name, this one has a good name in Jersey City. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Edward Perkins and I have something to say about this ordinance. First of all, with all due respect, Mr. Gallagher and uh, council president Waterman, uh, emotions are high tonight. When you hear an outburst from me, you're going to hear an outburst from me. I don't appreciate the reprimand from you because I'm very emotional, angry and I'm mad. And it's not just right now at this moment because of the failure of the mayor's office, but also because of this body. So you're presiding over it, but this house and this meeting is just as much as mine as it is as yours. So thank you. Now with this.
I'll answer that when you finish. Go ahead.
With this ordinance, when I read on Twitter that it was eight thousand units and thirty-five percent affordable housing, I spit in my house. I'm disgusted still. I'm not satisfied. Why can't it be fifty percent or why can't the whole, whole darn thing be built with affordable housing dollars? Where is the money from the federal government and the state to build? The mayor said on Twitter, it was true affordable housing. Let me let you know this. Where I live at, true affordable housing, everything that you decide to build is not true affordability for us. Thank you.
One moment. One moment, sir.
What, what I would like to explain, the reason why we ask everyone to be quiet because you cannot hear when y'all clap. We want to hear you. We know you press your way so you can speak to this council. We really cannot hear you. That's why we say wait to the end and give your applause because we cannot hear. When they clap, I don't know what, what it said. None of us know. So it's important that you speak to us. That's why you came, correct? So it's important that we hear. So that is why. And when you go into anybody's house, there are rules. And so we really want to hear. There's people who come with different issues and we definitely want to hear. So that's why we say what we say because we really can't hear. We telling you the truth. So go ahead.
Thank you.
Good evening, president. My name is Uche Agpa. I'm a member of Jersey City Together and of the Bayfront Advisory Committee. We are, where we are today with Bayfront was the hard work of people in the community with organizations such as ICO and then later Jersey City Together. Their hard work got us to where we are today. This is a project that the community worked on and will bring thousands of affordable apartments to Jersey City. This is huge for the city, which was recently ranked the most expensive rental market in the country. Affordable housing is necessary to, to combat the rising cost of rents. The way to create true affordable housing is projects like this. The way to make these projects financially work is tax abatements. Developments like this are the only reason for tax abatements. A tax abatement for Bayfront is necessary to make it work. Years of hard work and effort pushed us to this point. The power to get this done lies within your hands. With the tax abatement, we can ensure that Bayfront can happen and that thirty-five percent of true affordable housing is added to the city. Members of the council, I urge you to make the right choice for the residents of Jersey City and approve the tax abatement for Bayfront.
Thank you.
Your name, sir?
Hod Uer. H-E-U-E-R.
H-U.
H-E-U-E-R.
Okay.
I'd like to address the council. I'm a business agent for Local One Sixty Four, International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. This is a fantastic project. I have uh, I have about sixty Jersey City residents in our local. I wish I had a lot more, but the problem is as fast as I take them in, they have to leave after a few years because they can't afford to live here. And that's a problem. I'd rather have a hundred and sixty or two hundred and sixty residents in my, in my union that live in Jersey City. This is a great opportunity. You know, we have uh, I have a young man right here from Jersey City. He can come here. He can live here. He can plan his roots here. And uh, I'd rather them taking the light rail to work from another neighborhood to go work somewhere else downtown or take a bus up to Journal Square. But we're having a lot of problems up in Journal Square because it seems like a lot of the workers there come in a white van, get out of the white van and go to, and, and go to work. You know, it's pretty despicable. You know, I'd rather have our, our residents working here, whether they're from Jersey City or from Hudson County, where they can have a career, they can have a pension, they can have a, a good life when they're, after they worked their thirty, thirty-five years. So I hope we pass this. It's important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your name, sir?
Elliot Clifford.
Elliot Clifford?
Clifford. I'm an apprentice with uh, Local One Sixty Four. Uh, I learned a lot tonight about uh, you know, how ordinances work and all that stuff. The unions are a path to the middle class. We wouldn't be able to get housing in Jersey City unless we had work that could supply it. We need affordable housing. This abatement will give us that and I'm here to support it.
Thank you.
Yield my time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cameron Orr. I'm uh, I have to admit, I'm, I'm not fully um, understand all the ins and outs of this particular legislation, but I just want to ask a general question. Um, totally in support of, you know, we need to have housing built by union labor. We need to have those jobs available to people who live here in the community. The houses that go up, the people who live nearby should be the ones benefiting from the jobs, uh, good union jobs. And we definitely need a hundred percent affordability, real affordability, based on what people actually make in the neighborhood in, in the, in the housing that goes up. But I do also want to ask a general question. What, what do we need to do um, to get the money from the people who have it to get, to get it done? Because uh, uh, is there something we need to do at the state level to change um, the tax structure? I mean, is there a way that we can make it so that these multi-billion dollar real estate companies are maybe paying a different tax rate from people who live in their homes? I mean, last time I checked Goldman Sachs is in Jersey City. Maybe we could get some of that money for the people. That's, anyway, that's it.
Thank you.
Your name?
Chris Coopel.
Thanks, Chris.
You're welcome. You heard from just about everybody. You know this is a no-brainer. This is something we need, thirty-five percent and, and it's all on the legit. Nobody has to go to Staples and get a pencil and sharpen it. There are no hidden greedy developers involved. We finally have a project we could be proud of. We need to have your vote. There's not enough union work for our members here in Jersey City who live, bleed and eat here. I know you all know me. I know you all know my membership. You need to stand up and help us now. It's a simple task. You remember us today and we'll remember you on another day. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Josh. Thank you.
Your name?
Hello, my name is Sunita Davis.
I, I couldn't get the.
Sunita Davis. C-Y-N-I-T-A. Davis. D-A-N-I-V-S.
Thank you so much.
Okay, no problem. Hello, my name is Sunita Davis once again, and I worked in Honeywell. I digged every day, all day for four years, removing all the, removing the community down, removing all the dirt down from in there. And I appreciate y'all making this here job and doing the right thing. Right now I'm blessed. I work at the courthouse. But when I look to the left and I look to the right, I look to the side, I look to the other side, all them jobs down there are non-union. Pay attention. And Beverly Bursey, last name. Pay attention. I don't know what's going on, but it's bad for us right now. It's hard. And when I worked in Honeywell and I got paid, I had to pay my home taxes. I live in Jersey City. I have a property in Jersey City. Make this thing right. All these union, non-union jobs? Come on now. Pay attention. Something's going on. Somebody's doing the wrong thing for the wrong reasons. Pay attention.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Gary Murphy.
Gary.
We need affordable housing. We need union jobs, but we also need funds for our school district. And I did want to follow up on one comment um, just a few minutes ago. Advocating for an equitable distribution of the uh, payment in lieu of taxes. That's not what I see when I read the ordinance. I see a sliver to the county and everything else going to the city. So it would be my hope that when you pass this ordinance, it will be with an amendment that will give the school district their fair share of the pie. Thank you.
Thank you. Yo. That's it, right?
This is, well, this is still a public hearing on this ordinance. Any other member of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Motion to close the public hearing on city ordinance twenty-three day zero nine three was made by councilperson Saleh.
Second.
And seconded by councilperson Solomon. And seconded by Councilperson Solomon. On the motion to close a public hearing on city ordinance 23 days 093, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejees.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman. Motion carries eight zero to close the public hearing on city ordinance 23 days 093. Council members, I believe our business administrator would like to redress the council before I X for a final vote.
Thanks, Sean. I just want to thank the council for the work. We've been working on this for several years. And just for the public, I just want to acknowledge that as some of the speakers had alluded to tonight, this is the perfect example of what a pilot is used for with labor involved. 35% affordable housing is an historic number for us and the administration is very proud of this. And lastly, I know everybody has some comments on it, but I would like to thank the Bayfront Advisory Committee. This is a group of volunteers and elected officials that really dive into the details of this and spend long nights working on every intricate part of this, from the light rail extension to the affordability. So I do want to thank the members of that committee and I look forward to working on future phases.
Go ahead, James, because Joe is here.
Yeah, I just ask either the administration or Jay Serre Council, just to put on the record, we're adding a late item to share revenue with the schools and just to explain what that is and how that works.
Joe is here. Come on, Joe.
Joe, we'll discuss the legal transfer of the funds, but the administration has been working with the council on the same perspective that Mr. Murphy had just presented on, you know, diverting some of the funds over, not diverting, excuse me, sharing some of the funds with the schools. So I'll have Joe discuss the intricate parts of that.
So first, this is really awesome. Thank you for allowing me to be part of this process. I really enjoyed providing the legal advice from the beginning to the end. The council, I think, has on their resolution, we drafted for you, a resolution that expresses your desire for the administration to meet with the Board of Education and begin a dialogue about a specific agreement that we bring back to you that would allow for the sharing of this pilot with the Board of Ed in accordance with the existing percentages for otherwise applicable taxes. I think that was, is one of the last items on your agenda tonight.
Yes, it is. Okay, Sean.
All right. So council members, for final consideration and adoption of city ordinance 23 days 093, Councilperson Ridley.
First, I want to say thank you to our Bayfront Advisory Board. We've worked for years now, going through all of the ins and outs of this project. We've worked with making sure that each developer that responded to the RFP was somebody that we thought was the person or the company to get this job done and not, we traveled together. We traveled to New York. I traveled as far as Boston looking at projects. So we really wanted to make sure that we chose responsible developers that could get this done for the city. As everyone said, 35% affordable labor union. Thank you to Jersey City Together for being champions for this site and seeing it through and sitting with us on the board and making sure that we could make a joint effort to do something really unique in Jersey City. And not just Jersey City, but I don't think there's anything like this in the state, probably nothing like this in the region. Thank you to all the residents for your input. As they said, there is a resolution for us to collaborate with the Jersey City Schools. And I just want to say, you know, I know that pilots can be a difficult thing. I know that there have been a lot in this city, but I also believe that, you know, if you live in Ward A, then you know we are the last area of the city to start to see development. And when things happen in what we call the Fab Ward, that would be A, F and B. When a good thing happens in A, it triggers to B. When something good happens in B, it triggers to A, it triggers to F. So I think that all three of our wards have waited our turn. Now we're starting to see development come our way. It's our turn to get our pilot and it's our turn to get our affordable housing. So if we can do that in a smart way that benefits our residents, then it's something that we should do. So thank you to everybody for your input and for being involved. And with that, I vote aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
So thank you to the people who spoke tonight. Thank you to ICO and members of Jersey City Together that have advocated for decades to get the site cleaned and to get us to where we are today. Also to thank you, the Bayfront Advisory Board. It is a combination of residents, members of Jersey City Together, people who are in construction to really dig through all of this for the last four plus years with a fine tooth comb to make sure that we are getting the best for our residents. When we decided to go down this road of 35% affordable, we knew it wasn't going to be easy, but we knew that it was the right thing to do. In addition to that, with this pilot and abatement, we get to make good on another policy thing, which is very important to us, was making sure it triggers a project labor agreement, which triggers union work and local work. Very important to us. This is going to have pre and post-construction jobs for our residents that are going to benefit their families now moving forward and for generations to come. So this is not a one and done thing. There will be other requests for pilots, I'm sure. We have an opportunity to learn from the past, to learn from the ways that pilots were necessary, but also the same way that pilots were abused. So here we have an opportunity to 35% affordable, union labor, and important to the committee and to my fellow council members, although I won't speak for them, I'll speak for myself, making sure that there is equitable splits of the payments to our school district, to the city. Because back in 2018, we did pass a resolution requesting any future pilots do just that. This is the first time in the five and a half years that we are going to put that into action. And there's a commitment for that moving forward. Bayfront is going to be a major accomplishment for the west side of the city over the next 20 years. And I'm thankful to be part on this journey with my fellow council colleagues, with the Bayfront Committee. And with that, I vote aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Pat Kelleher, where are you? All right, Pat, I just want you to understand something. I live in the Journal Square area and I'm disgusted what I see with this development. It should all be union work. I've seen more accidents, more problems caused there. And what somebody was saying about people getting on a bus was correct. But I'm going to tell you something. A lot of people are telling me to vote no on this because the one, two, three and four family houses in this city are suffering. I had a guy come to me today and said he's moving out of the city because he can't afford the taxes anymore. He can't afford the water bills anymore. It's getting disgusting. But because of you, Pat, I'm going to vote yes. But I want you to understand one thing. Something has to change in this city. Our taxes have to go down. We're driving everybody out of this damn city.
Councilperson Saleh.
Okay. This project is over 30 years in the making. And it used to be a contaminated, post-apocalyptic Blade Runner-esque wasteland. And, you know, Jersey City Together's predecessors, they sued to have it cleaned up. And Jersey City took the crazy step to acquire this huge swath of land to make sure that there was affordable housing, that the city committed to having affordable housing here. And the tax abatement that we're discussing tonight solidifies that affordability. And it's one of the largest affordable housing projects, not just in New Jersey, not just in the tri-state area, but in the country. Okay, and I want to thank the Bayfront Advisory Board. I want to thank Jersey City Together. I want to thank the administration, the labor unions that made sure that there was a project labor agreement. I want to thank Councilpersons Denise Ridley and Councilwoman Mayor Prinzieri for their hard work to making sure that we're here today to vote on this. Yep. And finally, also for making sure that the school board is going to get their fair share from this pilot agreement. I went through the school system from pre-K through 12th grade here in Jersey City. So just happy that we can, you know, learn from the mistakes of the past. This is a good day for Jersey City. Thank you. Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Thank you to the activists who over 30 years and culminating with Jersey City Together, cleaned a contaminated site, held corporate polluters accountable, and then changed what was supposed to be a 5% affordable site to one that is genuinely 35% affordable with rents that families in the city are going to afford. Thank you to every single person who made this happen, really my two colleagues, Councilwoman Ridley and Councilwoman Prinzieri, all the folks of the advisory committee. An incredible effort was taken over 30 years to get to this point. But very simply, Jersey City needs homes that families can afford. It needs middle-class jobs. It needs funding for our school system. And so no matter who may choose to demagogue the vote that all of us take today, it is absolutely the right thing to do. And I vote aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Very seldomly do I see a project check all the boxes. So thank you to Jersey City Together. Thank you to the committee. Thank you to Councilwoman Mayor Prinzieri, Denise Ridley. This is a huge accomplishment here. And for personal reasons too, I vividly recall going to the bowling alley at this very site, playing manhunt behind a bowling alley next to the mattress place. So to see this come to fruition with 35% affordable, box check. Local labor union jobs, box check. Funding going to the school, box check. People from Jersey City being able to stay in Jersey City, box check. So this is a huge victory for everyone. And again, thank everyone for being a part of it. I wish all of our votes were this easy. I'll tell you that much. So I'll probably vote aye.
Councilperson Dejees.
I want to thank all of the activists and groups that worked on this and collaborated for over 30 years. The councilwomen who treat this like they're children, their child, to make sure that it gets ushered through seamlessly. I want to thank the union for coming and speaking out tonight to remind us what our priorities should be with all development in Jersey City. And Councilwoman Ridley is correct. You know, the south side and the west side of the city are underdeveloped and didn't really experience the boom of the 90s and the early 2000s where properties were getting abated as an incentive to come, you know, here and build and bring the people that we have here now. Some of you have only been here for 10 or less years. You probably moved into something that was an abated property or piloted property at one time. So it'd be unfair to take that away from our side of the town as I'm a Ward A resident as well. I think that this is an example of an incredible public-private partnership. And, you know, like Councilman Gilmore just said, it checks off so many of the boxes that are all of our priorities and I wish we all agreed on things this wholeheartedly that we vote aye.
And Council President Waterman.
I want to thank everybody for coming out and speaking on this project. I want to thank all the activists who was advocating for the site. And I want to thank my colleagues because when we started this project a couple of years ago, this was an ambitious project for the city. Some people came out and protested and said we shouldn't purchase the land. They fought us against that, but our desire was to get more affordable housing. And so there's a phrase that you got to put your money where your mouth is. And so what we did as a city, we purchased it and we knew that going into this project, it was going to take tax abatements. We quite aware of that. And so we put ourselves forward to approve tax abatements. This is just the first phase of that site. Because when you understand exactly what tax abatements can bring to a community, it does help. So often they always say the two tails of the cities, like downtown and then the south side. When you understand how downtown was developed for some of us that lived in the city forever, downtown used to be a horrible place too. It wasn't always fun down there. But what they did, they gave tax abatements to some of those developers down there. And believe it or not, some of those apartments down there are affordable. That started the building down there. So now we going to the south side of the city. The south side of the city deserve the right to. They deserve to be built up too. So if it takes tax abatements and you have to really understand tax abatements because it's not like they're not paying taxes. They are paying a portion of the taxes, all right? But in return, they giving us affordable units because when you go to a finance company, they consider affordable housing like no revenue when you go. So you got to understand the whole business process of it. And so it's so important for us to get affordable housing because we know people need a place to live. And so when Councilwoman Ridley and Councilwoman Mayor Prinzieri took on this task, they went near and far to make sure they was doing the right thing. They went near and far to make sure that they found minority developers. They went near and far to make sure the union was included in this project. So this is an ambitious project and we will come back with the rest of that land there needing more tax abatements. I just want that clear because you can't start a project and don't finish it. You just can't. And people on the south side deserve the right for that land to be built up, just like on this side of town. So whatever we need to do to build up that side of the town, because the people on that side of the south side deserve it, I'm willing to vote for it. So with that, I do vote yes. And thank you ladies for doing a great job.
City ordinance 23 days 093 is adopted eight zero with Councilperson Rivera absent. Onto our last second reading ordinance, item 4.11, city ordinance 23 days 094 is an ordinance adopting amendments to the Morris Canal redevelopment plan, including the creation of the mixed-use F zone from properties currently zoned one district and mixed-use B district. Before I call for a public here, I'm just going to let them exit. If we can exit as quiet as possible, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much for coming. Okay, so this is a public hearing on city ordinance 23 days 094. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, please come up to the podium and state your name for the record.
Motion second.
Motion to close the public hearing was made by Council President Waterman on city ordinance 23 days 094, seconded by Councilperson Saleh. On the motion to close the public hearing on city ordinance 23 days 094, Councilperson Ridley. Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Can we close the back door, please? Councilperson Solomon.
He stepped out.
Councilperson Gilmore. Councilperson Dejees.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman. Motion to close the public hearing on city ordinance 23 days 094 is approved six zero with council members Ridley, Solomon and Rivera absent. For final consideration and adoption of city ordinance 23 days 094, Councilperson Ridley is not here. Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Stepped out.
Sorry. Councilperson Gilmore. Councilperson Dejees.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman. City ordinance 23 days 094 is adopted six zero with council members Ridley, Solomon and Rivera absent. Okay, council members, before we move on to the public speaking portion of the meeting, we just have one order of business to add item 10.32, Resolution 23 dash 743 to the agenda. And I'll read it into the record. It's a resolution of the municipal council of the city of Jersey City, referring ordinance 23 dash 096 to the planning board to prepare an amendment or referring Ordinance twenty-three dash zero nine six to the planning board to prepare an amendment or revision to the Journal Square twenty-sixty redevelopment plan. May I have a motion to add?
Motion to add.
Motion made by Councilperson Saleh.
Second.
Seconded by Councilperson Prinsari. On the motion to add item ten point thirty-two, Resolution twenty-three dash seven four three to the agenda, Councilperson Ridley.
He's still out.
Councilperson Prinsari.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
And just to confirm, this is adding Councilman Bajiano's ordinance as a resolution to the planning board for review?
That is correct.
Right. Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejees.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman. Motion to add item ten point thirty-two, Resolution seven forty-three to the agenda is approved seven zero with Council members Ridley and Rivera absent.
Clark, I apologize if we're going to hijack this little break. We did upload the resolution for the closed session of the council as well to discuss ongoing litigation. That's going to be Monday, September twenty-fifth at four P M.
Okay, let me motion to add.
Motion.
Well done. Item ten point thirty-three. Resolution twenty-three dash seven four four to the agenda.
Session.
And if you could just repeat that, Corporation Council. Nope. There it is. There it is. Happened there. I'm sorry about that.
Okay. Resolution of the council authorizing a closed session of the municipal council on Monday, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three at four P M in the F Room Zario Caucus Room on the bottom floor of City Hall to discuss ongoing and anticipated litigation.
Okay, council members. I need a motion to add item ten point thirty-three, Resolution twenty-three dash seven four four to the agenda.
Well. Second.
Motion was made by Council President Waterman, seconded by Councilperson Saleh to add item ten point thirty-three, Resolution twenty-three dash seven four four to the agenda, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinsari.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejees. Step away. Oh, they're running away from me. And Council President Waterman. Motion to add item ten point thirty-three, Resolution twenty-three dash seven four four to the agenda is approved seven zero with Council members Dejees and Rivera absent. Just one other order of business, if I could, council members, if I can just catch up. Councilperson Prinsari, I would need your vote on City Ordinance twenty-three dash zero nine zero.
Aye.
So Ordinance twenty-three dash zero nine zero is now adopted eight zero with Councilperson Rivera absent. And your vote on Ordinance twenty-three to zero nine one.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-three to zero nine one is now adopted eight zero with Council Rivera absent. And your vote on Ordinance twenty-three to zero nine two.
Aye.
City Ordinance twenty-three to zero nine two is now adopted eight zero with Councilperson Rivera absent. Or everybody caught up. Okay, on Ordinance twenty-three dash zero nine four, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Twenty-three to zero nine four is now adopted eight zero with Councilperson Rivera absent. Okay, I think we are all caught up. Councilperson Gilmore, did you want to address?
Yeah, Sean, apparently some people, was there error with regards to individuals signing up for the public speaking list with September seventh and September twentieth?
So when people sign up for the council meeting, there is not a date on the signup process of it. So the person that signs up, because we, our last council meeting was on a Thursday, so if a person signed up Wednesday to speak, that person was added to the Thursday agenda. If they didn't indicate or communicate with the office, either by email or phone call, letting me know that they're looking to sign up on the twentieth, I have no way of knowing that, so that's why their name appeared on the September seventh meeting. With that being said, we're going to go through our public request for a hearing. I'll be calling the number and the first name of the individuals, so please pay attention to the agenda. First speaker, five point one, Laverne.
Evening, council. I'm here tonight. I talked about it before, about the mental healthness. And what's the name of the Arrive Together? We want to know what happened with that with the wake of losing our baby few weeks ago that had mental health problems. And then we want to know what happened with the footage of what happened to him. This young man comes from a good family. His grandfather was one of the first sweepers that I know when they first started to sweeping these streets sixty-seven years ago, when I was a young lady living on Maple Street. This family is a strong community family in our city, and I'm seventy-five, and I go back with this family seventy years. So I know them. I know this baby right here. We need answers. And that's why they're here tonight. They want answers. What happened to the mental health? What happened to the footage of what happened to their baby and to our baby, our community? We need answers. And I told you that this summer when I ran that camp, mental health, I never seen it so much with our babies. I told you before this happened at the council meeting, and that's why I'm trying to start an afternoon program, and that's why we need answers, and we need help about this baby.
The Arrive Together, what happened with the money? Laverne has to speak.
Laverne has.
All right.
Sorry.
Want to know what happened with the money with the program after you all voted on it.
Well, so the, it wasn't the Arrive Together program, that's a different.
Right.
But the RFP for mental health intervention did go out, and we received two bids that came in. I believe one was over, another one wasn't.
One was out of town.
Responsible, yeah. So we did reissue it right after the passing of the budget, I want to say, two weeks ago? About a month ago? Yeah, so, yes, to begin, so the RFP is actually out now for bid.
Okay, what about the C P R? A C C R B? Prices?
Oh, civilian complaint.
Go ahead. That's a, that's a, go ahead.
So just quick, Ridley, Council President, number of worked in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one to put a C C R B in place in Jersey City. During that time, the State Supreme Court issued a ruling that kind of gutted C C R Bs. So basically, you could do them, but they had no power, no ability to issue subpoenas, no ability to provide any form of true investigation. So we passed an order, a resolution calling on the state to give us the power to do a C C R B. And I think Assemblywoman McKnight has a bill in the state legislature to do that. It just needs to get passed by the state legislature and signed by the governor. And then I think, you know, and then I think we were actually internally talking about just issuing our support again, so people know where, you know, can't speak for everyone, but where we stand, that, you know, we need to have independent oversight when members of the community have concerns and accuse the police of misconduct, and there has to be an independent investigation into that by civilians in the city, which is what a C C R B would do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, just so everyone know, the footage does not reside in this jurisdiction. We, I mean, we can advocate that they release it as quick as possible, but that reside within the Office of the Attorney General, because, you know, it's their investigation.
Correct.
Council President, Councilman Gilmore, just for clarity, that RFP is back September twenty-sixth. So once we have those RFPs, we should be able to issue a formal bid at the next council.
Okay. Bye, Sean.
Okay, our next speaker, five point two, Christopher. Christopher here. Okay. Next speaker, five point three, Robin.
Oh, she's right there.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight in support of the family of Andrew Jerome Washington the third. There are so many parts of this incident that are incredibly disturbing to me. I'm a licensed professional counselor in the state of New Jersey for over twenty-five years. Some of you in this room know me as the CEO of Hudson Partnership CMO, and I work with youth across Hudson County right now. But prior to this position, for over fifteen years, I worked with individuals who had severe and persistent mental illness. I ran programs for individuals who were being discharged from Greystone State Psychiatric Facility. I ran a program on the grounds of their facility. I also ran prior to that programs in Passaic County for that population. I'm here to tell you that the police are never the right first response ever to a mental health crisis. And when I look at the timeframe of what happened with this incident, that only half an hour was given to de-escalate before this man was shot and killed, I'm outraged and sickened. Emotional.
Yeah.
I can tell you that in the jobs that I had, I went into locked units to do evaluations. I went without Kevlar. I went without shields. I went without a gun. I went without pepper spray. I went without tasers.
Yeah.
I went in myself, eight months pregnant, doing those assessments, because the reality is, when you look at the data, and from my own personal experience, I can tell you that people with severe mental illness are much more likely to be the victims of a crime than they are to commit it. If you are trained, if you are properly trained, and I've been in these situations, so I'm not talking about theory, you can de-escalate someone who's upset, even if they have a weapon. There are models, and I encourage you to look at what Colorado and Denver is doing, the Star Model. They have folks that look like me, the way I'm dressed right now, going in. Because as soon as you call in folks with emergency vehicles in uniforms that have weaponry, it doesn't take a mental health professional to figure out that you're escalating the situation, and you're not de-escalating it. When a family calls because they're concerned that their loved one may be suicidal, may hurt themselves, when the resolution to that is a murder, it's unacceptable. They were asking for help. They were asking to speak to him. They weren't told until hours later that he died. Accountability has to come from this body. It has to come from a mayor who, unfortunately, in my opinion, had the poor judgment to make a decision that it was justified before there was even an investigation.
Shameful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, five point four, Edward.
My name is Edward Perkins, and if you can't tell right now, my voice is sore. I am mad as heck at this body, and not just this body, but the office of mayor as well. You see, we learned from Councilman Gilmore that last year in April of twenty-two, this body moved, so everybody stands here tonight and give you credit. But when those two bids were denied, it took until Andrew's death. He said, in the next council meeting on the twenty-sixth, the RFP, what the heck happened from last April until now? It's because of Andrew's death that this is being addressed, that RFP, that this should have been addressed. And you know what? This incident and the lack of resources delivered to our community is indicative of how this body moves. That's why when I always come down here, I say the harmful policies come from this body. I have a lot of disdain from this body. We go through a lot of harm and hurt because of these policies that y'all put out here. So now you offer us an eight thousand, eight thousand unit, thirty-five percent affordable housing, historic, right? But like I said, that on Facebook, who the heck can afford to live in a one-bedroom or two or three-bedroom with their family with these new affordable apartments? And it's not okay. It's not okay. I oftentimes look at the leader like, leadership, what is going on with this body? What is going on with this body? Our cries for help, we're hurting. You need to hear them. Many community organizations are here right now, standing in the gap, doing work. You know why? Because we lack resources. We lack the resources. If we had resources to do, to live the better quality of life and equity, many of our issues, we maybe wouldn't have these issues. We cry out on the steps of City Hall, stop police brutality in the black community. This body is proud of the budget that you just passed. Over two hundred million dollars for public safety money. Lots of it going to police. Where I live in A and F, we're overpoliced. Those dollars could be better spent. Start now. Those dollars could be better spent. Start now. Please, somebody hold these five oh one C threes and bring them in your office. I see representatives, some credible messengers here, community treasurers, anti-violence coalition. We see people doing real good work on the ground and making a difference, because there is no response. There's no infrastructure built for resources to deliver to our community. I'll be back.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, five point five, Tina.
My name is Tina Knowles, and yes, y'all already know, I'm in the community for outreach. I outreach for all the nonprofits, because we try to get the word out. Y'all did leave War F, like, I don't understand it. Some of y'all, I found that was living here in Jersey City for a long time. I'm not even from Jersey City. I'm from Alabama. And I've been in the community for a long time doing free work, free, 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 free work. And I feel like that y'all should have been out there in the community. Today was a sad thing for me to come down here to walk with Ms. Evan. Ms. Evan is my road dog, y'all, her whole family. That outreach that we was doing, y'all should have been gave out the money to the funds to nonprofit, because we would have not been here saying, justice for what? We would not been here if y'all would have just listened to the outreach that we've been begging for. They been doing nonprofit for years. I've been with Ms. Evan doing back to school, families have been, families event, Dr. Seuss reading in a book, and Lisa Spot, they was letting us use this for free. We should not be here at this time talking about this. We should be out here congratulating all of us for doing good, but instead, we out here listening to us begging y'all again for resource for I War F, resource for I War F. We definitely need the resource. We've been begging it. Mental health is definitely a problem. I even got the hat on, because we definitely need that. I get depressed. Other people go through stuff that don't mean to kill us, that meant to help us. Please help us. Stop doing stuff like this, going inside a people house, killing and stuff like this. Let's go out and help each other. Let's get more information. Let's start helping each other out in the community. Like Edward just said, reach out to the nonprofits. We out there every day. I know y'all see it, because I'm live every day. We up in these meetings every other month, talking about. We up in these meetings every other month, talking about resource for WarF. It's depressing, y'all, y'all making it more depressing because we out here for justice for Drew, and y'all not helping out. Please, guys, pay attention. I see y'all let go of the low income, I've been begging people in our community to come out and talk about that because I already see what's going on. Down here is looking beautiful, WarF is looking like, like back in the hood, crackhead or something like that. Y'all need to come on and help us out. Again, guys, justice for all.
Thank you, thank you, Tina.
Our next speaker, five point six, Jessica.
Good evening, my name is Jessica Taub. I am a licensed social worker and I am a mother of two children. I'm here tonight, um, I'm exhausted, I'm really tired. Um, and I don't think I'm as tired as some of the people who spoke before me, but I'm really tired of having to come here to come to these meetings and ask for dignity and respect for my neighbors, for my neighbors of color. I'm tired, I have other things to do, I'd like to be home with my children. Um, I heard someone say behind me that public safety kills, and I think in this city it does. I think we have a really warped definition of what public safety is. What public safety should be is quality recreation programs, excellent public schools for all of our children, true affordable housing, a living wage. Public safety is not a fancy new building on Martin Luther King Drive in the middle of a community that is begging you for resources. I saw that building a few weeks ago and I wanted to vomit. That made me so angry. That is not public safety. Public safety is not adding more police. Public safety is anti-violence work, public safety is restorative justice. It is, it's not a mayor who cares more about his political image and his run for governor than to say something respectful to the family of Andrew Washington. Shame on him, shame on him. I'm so angry. Public safety is not police murdering a man who needed help. Mental illness is not a crime. Being black is not a crime. And I don't, what, I also want to know, I'm part of Jersey City Together, and I know they worked hard to come up with this plan to send out crisis workers when we have an incident like this. What happened? What happened to that plan? He, Andrew Washington might still be alive today if that plan had been in place. We don't know for sure, but I know the research says that when you have programs like that, people don't get murdered. They get support. You know, I mean, even little things like public safe, the public safety department in the city, I thank my council member, Ms. Ree, for helping me get a cop on the corner of PS 17, but I had to call. I had to call City Hall, I got bounced around from department to department. I could not reach anybody who could tell me anything about a crossing guard. You have children crossing at Belmont and, and Bergen with no crossing guard for the first three or four days of school. Where was the public safety director? Why did they not know that there wasn't a crossing guard there? We have really, it doesn't make sense. Yeah, right? I, I had to call, I had to finally get in touch with my councilperson who had to call the public safety director and get a, get a crossing guard or get a cop put there. That is ridiculous. That is a waste of my time. And we have bigger things going on. Again, we have police going into homes with SWAT gear and murdering people. It's not okay. We need to get this mental health program implemented, and we need to rethink our vision on public safety in the city because what we are doing, it is not working, it is killing people. Thank you.
Our next speaker, five point seven, Janice. Is Janice here? Five point eight, Michael.
Good evening, I'm Michael Armon. First of all, my sympathy to all the friends and family of Andrew Washington. I'm sorry to be interrupting your narrative, but the people of my neighborhood in, in Journal Square have some important business that we have to continue tonight. First part of which is to very much and publicly thank Councilman Bojiano and his staff, Pam Andis and Dana Bonham for working with the Journal Square, his, uh, Community Association for the last year and a half to improve the availability of affordable housing in Journal Square. The second thanks are to, uh, uh, the councilmen who have already endorsed an initiative that we have. The third, which would be Councilman Solomon and, uh, Councilman Sally. And, uh, I'm sorry, I haven't seen you. Thank you.
Gilmore, yes.
Thank you. Thank you to the entire, uh, in, uh, council for passing a resolution this afternoon, formally sending our proposal for affordable housing to, to the planning commission. We very much appreciate that. Uh, I only have a short time, I have a few other things to do. I actually want to thank the mayor and the council collectively for all of the things that they have done these last three or four years on affordable housing in this community. We heard earlier about Bayfront, uh, we talk a lot about the IZO, which is now in a second version. However, I also have to point out that the city has a dilemma that it needs to look at. I'm not necessarily including city council. They have a, uh, major initiative in affordable housing called the IZO. They have a major commitment to the neighborhood of Journal Square for its development process. The two are not meeting very well right now because affordable housing isn't being provided under the IZO for Journal Square. We have a remedy for that. Uh, though, really, though, the city should have, a year or two ago, because they were told that it was not working, been taking the initiative themselves to find a remedy instead of us volunteers needing to do it. Uh, we now go into a review period under planning and, and into the law department. And frankly, based on the first newspaper comments, I have to make this comment back. I hope your review won't sound like your comments, which are finding ways to say no. We, the Journal Square expects that review to be finding ways to say yes to carry out what we're doing. And the last thing I want to say is there's lots of discussion about legal stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, five point nine, Janine. Janine, she's here.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Janine Brown. I'm Jersey City born and raised. I'm an educator. I'm a former member of the Fruitless Public Safety Advisory Board, and I'm a child of a schizophrenic mother. Imagine being a teenager and having a keen awareness of an episode at its onset. Imagine calling Mobile Crisis for help and the SWAT team arriving with riot gear and weapons. Imagine pleading with them to listen to what you have to say because you are the true expert living in that reality. And imagine them not listening. Now imagine a middle-aged black woman enslaved by the distorted reality of her mind. Imagine being afraid, paranoid, hearing voices and delusions that someone wants to harm you and your family. And imagine barricading yourself in your home because that is a safe place. And imagine a team of armed strangers and the guise of police barging through your door and macing you and brutally beating you. And now imagine how that situation could have played out with a skilled mental health professional. That's just one of the many horror stories I've lived with my mother, including her being incarcerated by JCPD as a result of her illness. I say that to say that my mother's journey could have ended like Andrew's. By the grace of God, my mother is in Trenton, I take that trip weekly because Jersey City does not have resources for mentally ill people. I was 16 when that happened. I am 41 now, a hundred and 25 years later, and nothing has changed. 25 years later, we are still marginalizing voices and no accountability. 25 years later, we are still sending police to respond to mental crisis when funds could be allocated for their RIDE program. 25 years later, we are still dealing with a healthcare system that only offers assistance when a patient presents a danger to themselves or others, and danger is subjective. 25 years later, and policing still lacks cultural responsiveness and trauma sensitivity. My message today is for the council to indict the system that gave the officers license to kill Martina Brown, remember her, and Andrew Washington. We need policy legislation, including the formation of a CCRB for more transparency and accountability. Swift implementation of that mental health intervention program that went nowhere. We want change and we want it now so no one else has to die in this manner. And lastly, I got something for the residents of Jersey City. Swift justice without investigation, victim shaming and blaming is par for Jersey City cause. Shame on y'all for electing this administration three times.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, five point 10, Hendeka. She's not here. Five point 10, Hendeka. Five point 11, Nakul. No. Five point 12, Eric.
Good evening, Madam President and City Council Members. My name is Eric Garrison. Those are some, uh, really hard speeches to follow, but I'm gonna do my best. I live in a senior citizen apartment complex at 259 Van Nostrom Avenue. There's about 80 apartments. Uh, last month, we were informed that the owner entered into a partnership with HUD. I'd like to read a part of what HUD's mission statement is. HUD's mission statement is to create strong, sustainable, and quality affordable housing for all. However, for those tenants that don't qualify, we will make your situation a living hell by raising your rent 300%. I thought I just said that, and just to make sure everybody's awake. The, uh, the part about my rent being raised 300% is correct, though. And I guess the landlord had the intent to do that, and they replied that they're gonna do it in phases. I still don't know what that means. Okay. I realize HUD is a federal program and that the municipal rent control laws don't apply. However, Congress passed something called the grandfather clause. It states that this is a provision in which an old rule continues to apply to some existing situation. Thank you.
Dave, it is information.
Okay, our next speaker, five point 13, Kevin. Is Kevin here? No. Five point 14, Viviana. No. Next, five point 15, Anne Marie.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Anne Marie Nazaro. I'm a member of Our Lady of Sorrows Parish, Ocean and Claremont Avenues, and I'm a proud member of that parish and of Jersey City Together Public Health, Public Safety Committee. I'm here tonight, we're here tonight, not to ask you to tell the mayor and the police chief how to do their jobs. We're here to ask you to ask them, to tell them, how to do their jobs better. We presented the proposal to the mayor, the police chief, and the head of Health and Human Services, Public Health, back in July of 2021. Our proposal was well researched and well thought out, and it looked across all the models some of my co-speakers mentioned tonight. Camden, there's the model in Houston, there are models all across the country that say, you send out social workers and outreach workers. First, you gotta hire them. You hire them as a municipality. Then you send them out with the police. Those police officers are officers who are inclined to this kind of work and who are trained with the social workers and outreach workers that the city hires. That's the model that we presented to the mayor and the police chief and the head of Health and Human Services. That model is not the one that got articulated at the press conference on August 28th, the day after Andrew Jerome Washington lost his life. They said, our police officers are trained, we send them for intensive training. Uh-uh, that is not the model. We are asking you to tell the mayor and police chief and director of public health how to do their jobs better. The model is not, police get trained over here. You haven't hired social or outreach workers to train with the police and go out with them. Integrated training of your cadre of social workers and outreach workers with the police officers, collective, communal, cooperative training of those entities together, that's what needs to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, five point 16.
Call this initiative.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Jerome Washington 911 Response Initiative.
Anne Marie.
Next speaker, five point 16, Stephen.
Okay.
Steve Young, I'm the president of National Action Network's South Jersey chapter, under the founder Reverend Al Shopton. And I'm here on this important issue because we've been dealing with it for some time now, throughout New Jersey. Being arrested 38 times for civil disobedience. You have a track record for standing up and fighting and going to jail. That's not a question. But the way you do things here is very disrespectful to the public. Number one, nobody in the United States should have to go on internet to sign up to speak in a public meeting to a council that belongs to us. You are a public servant and you work for the people. See, when you don't listen to the people in the street, then they bring the street to you. See, the voices of the unheard is what Dr. Martin Luther King talked about for a long time because there were too many people being in the comfort zone. That comfort zone is, is over. One issue is Valerie Dale, which is the sister of a veteran that was killed on the 4th of July, not too far from here. When he was killed because he had a mental problem, the first thing they, the Attorney General said they was gonna do is have someone go out with the police officers to have credibility in the community that can de-escalate any issues. Here we are, almost two and three years later, and here's Andrew, he's getting shot down for something that we talked about and we should, we demanded should happen back then. So I want to talk about these things. This systemic racism has to stop. And we want to talk about your role as council, what you can do today. You can demand with the support of the family and the people that the Attorney General's office release the video today. You can do a resolution right now, today, to make sure you support these, the people in the community. That's not something hard to do. And with that, yeah. And with that, yeah, put that motion on the table. And here's a second motion, that you do a no confidence vote against the mayor that made that type of statement with why this investigation is being held. Very disrespectful. A vote on no confidence tells him that you were with the people too. And not with somebody's going to be covering up anything moving forward. So those things you can do. Show the community that you support them as well. And the last thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where is the mayor?
On the timer.
Where is the deputy chief?
He's on that side. Mayor officials on that side.
Where, where are the people that should be held responsible?
Thank you.
What's going on?
Thank you.
And another thing that you can do, you.
If you, if you keep going on, you're going to cut down these people's time. We want to hear everybody.
Excuse me, I'm almost finished. You control the funding for the police department and everybody else.
Thank you.
You control those funds. If they don't act right, you can hold those funds till something is done.
Thank you.
The people get what they asked for. So that's about accountability, ain't about being your friend and about nothing else. It's about accountability. We're going to continue to be coming here to hold you accountable because we're taxpayers throughout the state of New Jersey. The tax, as long as federal dollars come here, we're going to be here.
Thank you.
State dollars come here, we're going to be here.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I'd like to say something. My name is Scott Junior. Excuse me.
Are you next?
Excuse me.
Are you next? What's your name? Are you next?
It's personal to me.
No, no, no.
It's not how it works, sir, I'm sorry. You cannot speak.
I'm going to speak.
Our next speaker is five point seventeen, Valerie.
My name is Mike Junior.
No. See.
Sir. Sir. Sir.
See now, we need somebody to remove them back.
Back up please.
Everybody should have the right to protest. Everybody should have the right to respect. So you have to move. No, don't, just move back, sir. We just asked you to move back. You know what? Sean. 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 Let's take a ten minute break. Let's take a ten minute break.
Ten minute break. Ten minute break.
We're good.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take, we're going to take a ten minute break and we'll be right back.
Motion for ten minute recess.
I have a motion. I have a motion by councilperson to lay to, for a ten minute recess. May I have a second on the motion?
Second by councilperson Prince Airi on the motion for a ten minute recess.
Councilperson Ridley.
Ridley. Yeah, Councilman Ridley.
Councilperson Prince Airi. By acclamation, all council members, please say aye for the ten minute recess.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll be back in ten minutes. All right. We're going to get back to our public speaking portion of the meeting. If we can just close that back door for me, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much. Okay. You're back on the record. We're going to speaker five point seventeen, Valerie. Thank you. Five point eighteen, Tova?
Tova? So, yeah.
Sorry. Tova?
Yes. So.
Tova, if you could just move the mic down to you a little bit so we can hear you. Thank you.
I'm a member of the People's Organization for Progress. We're here today, along with a number of other organizations, to support the family of Andrew Jerome Washington III, who was murdered by the Jersey City Police. And we, we're here to talk about how there's an epidemic in this country. And it's an epidemic of police murder of black and brown bodies. And it's been going on ways before, um, the murder of George Floyd even. Way back, there's been thousands of, um, black and brown men and women who've been killed by police all over this country. And twenty percent of those people, according to the Washington Post database, have been killed due to people in mental health crisis. Whereas other speakers have already talked about, the police are the first ones there. And their approach is to, uh, instead of trying to help this person who's in a mental health crisis, their approach is to use force, brutality, and murder. And so that's what has to stop. And one of the ways to stop it is by stopping having police be the first responders. Uh, there's lots of studies and lots, and then there's been programs implemented around the country where police do not go out on calls for mental health. And instead, you have mental health crisis workers that go out. As a matter of fact, the family of, um, Drew Washington did not call the police. They called the crisis intervention team. But who showed up? The police. And, and same with, uh, Najee Seabrooks in Patterson, who was also killed in the middle of a mental health crisis. He was part of the, um, nonviolence, uh, coalition. I might have the name messed up right now, uh, in Patterson. And, and was a mental health worker himself. But he was in a mental health crisis. And the police refused to allow his team, his mental health workers, the nonviolent, the Patterson Nonviolence Collective to come to his aid. And instead, the police insisted on coming in and they brutally murdered him as well. And then there was, uh, Bernard Placide in Englewood, uh, who also was recently killed just last year. His one year anniversary of his death was just mourned, um, just a few weeks ago. And he was killed in a mental, well, he was in a mental health crisis because the police stormed in. He was in danger, in danger to no one. And, but the police killed him. So.
Thank you.
Justice for Drew.
Next speaker, five point nineteen, Philip. Philip.
I'm the president, we have members of the city council that monitor the record. My name is Philip Carrington. I'm here to support the family of Andrew. I'm speaking extemporaneously. I don't have enough information, so I'm very careful of what I have to say. The family told me that the mayor made some comments. Dealing with him, on my experience with him, Steve Philip is dishonest and he deal with political skullduggery. And if he did not make these statements on oath, my belief is that he's lying like hell. You see, in Jersey City, there's two laws, one white, one black, separate and unequal. However, they're dealing with a black man with a weapon. He went up dead. Again, I'm not sure as to what happened. But I can tell you, I've been black all my life. I do business in the hood and live in the hood. Any person have strangers coming into your door, it is common for you to pull a knife no matter what mental state you are in. Look, I have two doors, a front door and a vestibule door. I'm a licensed gun owner. If you push past that second door, you would not be met with no knife, I guarantee you. I have a three sixty Remington. You in that door going to hell. But again, I don't know exactly what been on, but the brother had no right to be dead. Why? Primarily because if he had a knife in his house, you back up. It's as simple as that. So we are very, very annoyed by this. Whenever a black man have a weapon, he's dead. It's the second time in Jersey City. I mean, they shot in, in twenty nine, uh, twenty twenty, they did the same thing on Jackson Avenue. I mean, they shot more bullets at that house for one black man with a gun than Russia shoot at Ukraine. So look, we had a white man went to church, killed nine people. They took him alive with a gun and they let him eat hamburgers. At the cops supermarket, this black white man killed ten black people. And they disarmed him and took him with a knife. The brother had a knife. Look, we are used to home invasions. People break into your house all the time in the black community. If anyone comes in your house and is a stranger, it is coming for you to pull a knife. Again, I'm not clear on the issues and I'm not going to speak too much. But just on third hand information, that brother did not been dead.
Thank you, Phil.
Our next speaker, five point twenty, William.
Evening, members of the council. Good evening, members of the good citizens of Jersey City. My name is Bill Lilis. I am a member of Jersey City Together's Health and Safety Committee. I'm also a member of Our Lady of Sorrows Parish that is located just a few blocks away from where Drew Washington lost his life in his home as a result of a gunshot, gunshot wound. OLS is designated as a peace site. Well, people I've been hanging out with the past few weeks have told me if I want peace, I need to work for justice. So again, I stand here before you, as I have done before, asking the members to do all in your power to hire trained outreach workers to go out on emergency calls involving individuals from mental health or substance abuse issue. And I just want to clarify remarks from last month when I was talked about nothing happening. So the area or the time where nothing happened occurs when the RFP went out, the two bids were rejected, and then we want to know what happened. But we know an RFP has been reissued. Well, we want something to happen. Let's make something happen. Let's tell these people when it's happening and when outreach workers are going to be hired. And I want the family to know, I know the family of Drew Washington is asking for an apology. Well, I, Bill Lilis, want to apologize. I apologize that our committee did not know enough about how the power structure of this city works. Because if we did, if we did, that program that we've been advocating for would have been in place. And with that apology comes a promise. A promise to find out about this power system, how it works, and to make the changes needed to get this program in place. A promise to look at the current status of this RFP that's been issued and to work what we need to do, to work with who we need to work with in order to get this RFP into place and mental health workers out on the street. And I conclude with the same words I used the last time. You can't be neutral on a moving train. Well, this train is moving and the people need to see you're on it. This is, train needs to be moved from an express train. This needs to be an express train, an express train for justice, for Drew, and for the good people who are suffering. Thank you, and please do what you can.
Thank you.
Andrew Washington, say his name. Say his name. Say his name. Andrew Washington, say his name. Say his name.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Go ahead.
Our next speaker, five point twenty one, Tom. Think he left. Next speaker, five point twenty two.
Sir. Mm-hmm. Uh, thank you very much. Um, my topic is a little bit different than what everybody's been talking about. Uh, but I think in a way it helps solve some of the problems that everybody's talking about. And that is my problem with the assessments in the city. Now, I'm working on a project for some time. I know that I sent something to Councilman Solomon and Councilwoman Waterman uh, concerning a tax abatement, a tax exemption that they granted for five hundred luxury units on the waterfront at the Liberty Science Center. I've been told that someone told some of you that it's improper. It's not improper. That is sep, that is separately, um, subdivided for five hundred subsidy units that pays zero, zero real estate taxes. Now, you're talking about tax abatements before and we might not get a full amount. Well, here's five hundred luxury luxury units on the river paying nothing. One of the people who somewhat questioned what I said, I sent you a list of twenty five five-year tax abatements. Twenty-two of them were done wrong and they were recommended to you to pass. But if you read it and you read the law, you're going to find out that all those tax abatements should have never been granted. And that would have generated fifty-eight million dollars in taxes if it was paid properly. And the reason why, again, I'm here is because we just submitted another list, which the business administrator recommended. Fifty properties were given to the tax assessor over a month ago. He's worked on two of them since. For a month, it's taken him to do two projects. He said first, I don't have the resolutions.
Who's who?
It's his job to have the resolutions. And yet, he claimed he didn't. So we sent him all the resolutions and he still hasn't done it. Now, what I'm telling you is, is that we have serious, serious problems with the assessors. It's my estimate that we have over a billion, billions of errors in the assessor's office and no one's doing anything about it. And what I can tell you right now, just as an example, at four hundred Maran Boulevard, over a half acre of land by the assessor for twenty twenty-four is assessed at thirty-four thousand dollars. Thirty-four thousand dollars for a half acre of land that's probably worth thirty million dollars. He assessed it at thirty-four thousand. Right next to it, four tenths of an acre, he assessed at thirteen thousand two hundred dollars for twenty twenty-four. You have serious, serious problems with the assessors. People were concerned that I may be saying things improperly for him. He is defrauding the city by not doing his job in the billions of dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Um, go ahead, go ahead, Tom.
I, I just want to really put on the, sorry.
You know what? Could you just let us handle this, okay? Because this, he brought out some good points here. Okay.
Yes, sir.
What did you say? Let me tell you something. One thing I won't be disrespecting, you know, I respect everybody. All right, I'm not. I have to run a meeting. I have to run a meeting. Now, you can stay or you can leave because I have to run a meeting. You can't interrupt like that. We, he brought up a point and we wanted to handle it. All right? Okay? So now, if not, then I just have to have you removed. I don't want to do that. Go ahead, James.
Sure, I, I apologize. I just wanted to make a quick, quick statement. Uh, Mr. McCann brought up, uh, the, the issue on Maran Boulevard. I just want to put on the record, we've requested a review. We're waiting the returns of that before October first. If we don't get it, we're going to work on, uh, the, the reverse tax appeals that the city has the ability to do in April. So we had, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I just want you to understand that September thirtieth is the deadline.
Not October fifth, September thirtieth.
Do it. You got to get him to do it.
By the thirtieth, right.
By the thirtieth.
I just want to make sure it was on the record, we've requested that review because of what you sent us.
That's right. That assessment we really need to.
Hello? In a day, uh, council, um, we have been working with Mr. McCann and the internal audit to identify lists of properties that they feel have to be reviewed. Um, they were submitted to the assessor and we give them a deadline of Friday uh to establish those. Even if he works over the weekend, we'll still be in compliance with that deadline. But um, it is a mandate that those are updated prior to the October 1st filing.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, next speaker, 5.23, Ingrid.
Good evening. I want to express our sincere condolences again to the Washington family. Um, my name is Ingrid Hill. I'm with the People's Organization for Progress. We're here in support of the family of Andrew Jerome Washington, who was murdered by the Jersey City Police. Drew's death could have been prevented and his family would not be in continuous mourning had the city put in place programs to address how to handle individuals experiencing mental health issues. In an investigative report from the Washington Post, 178 individuals were killed by police who called for assistance to mental health issues. Uh, New Jersey is complicit in that with Andrew Jerome Washington in Jersey City, Najee Seabrooks in Patterson, Major Gulyadale III in Newton, and Bernard Plasey Jr. in Englewood, New Jersey. What it indicates is that the police are not prepared, equipped, or should be allowed to handle mental health situations. As council members, uh, you have the responsibility to make sure that it never happens again by putting the necessary mental health resources in place, but with community input, because a lot of times we put programs in place and we don't ask the community what the envision the needs to be. Um, police, again, for your police force needs to be psychologically evaluated in the hiring process because there are a number of police officers who should not be police. And we understand that. Also that all of the individuals who were involved should be prosecuted uh, to the full extent of the law because we know that he was murdered. The other thing too is that we also support all of the demands that were put forth. Um, and they're going to be read afterwards. And again, um, as council members, I think we really need to look at in terms of with the CCRB, it's critical that it has subpoena powers. It also have parallel investigatory powers. And this should have community engagement. It should not be set up just by the city council or either public officials, but the community should, should have an active involvement. Again, justice for Andrew Jerome Washington III. And hopefully this will be the last time that we have to come with regards to another murder being done in Jersey City by the police. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, 5.24, Diane. She left? Okay. Next speaker, 5.25, Joe. I don't see Joe. 5.26, Frank. He left too? Okay. Thank you. David left. 5.27 and 28 both left. Gary, 5.29, Gary? Yep. Thank you, council members.
Good evening again, I'm Gary Murphy. I too am here tonight to stand together with the family of Andrew Washington. When I sat down earlier to put some thoughts on paper, I uncharacteristically had a writer's block. And all I could think about was the two times in my adult life when I had to make a call to 911 to respond to one case of friend, one case of family member having severe mental health issues. Fortunately, those calls did not lead to a tragedy. But the reality is a phone call like that should never lead to a tragedy. Never really got much on paper. I decided instead to borrow from the editorial writers of the Star Ledger, who on September 3rd had some very strong words about this incident. I imagine those of you on the council have read them, but I think it's a good idea to revisit. So these will just be excerpts from that editorial. The two officers were following a supervisor's order to kick open Drew Washington's door. But we still haven't been given an adequate explanation of why this escalation was necessary after only 45 minutes of engagement. Mayor Steve Phillips, a candidate for governor and Public Safety Director James Shea, could not offer a plausible reason why the Jersey City Police decided that the best way to address an emotional meltdown is to arrive with sirens blaring and guns drawn. It is exasperating that city officials reflectively defend this practice and stubbornly refuse to embrace better methods in policing by adopting strategies that deescalate manic episodes and deploy first responders with expertise in dealing with mental illness. Thank you for your attention and I do really strongly believe that the community deserves answers, accountability, and change.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, 5.30, Laura.
Hi, my name is Laura Tatham. I'm a 15-year resident of this city and I'm here tonight to lend another voice to speak about Andrew Washington. Drew's family has been in this city for well over 100 years and Drew was on this earth for over 50 years. And now his family has been without him for 24 days. He deserved better. They deserve better and Jersey City deserves better. This city's failure to act on the mental health intervention program, even though you had the funding to do so, killed Drew Washington. Actions and a city's inactions have consequences. And in this case, it was a man's life. You should feel shame over this and this should light a fire under all of you with the new RFP. On that day, his family called the Jersey City Medical Center's Crisis Center, but the police showed up. His family pleaded with the police to use non-lethal force. They asked the police if they could speak with Drew. They were not listened to. Drew was not listened to and he was shot down. He was killed. It was two officers against a man in crisis. There are one in five Americans affected by mental illness. Jersey City has a population of roughly 30,000 people. Does that mean that 60,000 of our residents are at risk? Are too much for your police department to handle? Roughly 10% of calls to the police department involve someone with severe mental illness. What are you on the council doing to protect those people? I'm a documentary filmmaker by trade. I've spent nearly a decade of my life making films about issues that mean something to me. It's how I believe I can enact change in the world. And so have my friends. My friend Jennifer made a documentary called Ernie and Joe Crisis Cops. And it follows two officers in Texas who created the San Antonio Police Department's Mental Health Unit. Her film is available on HBO and I urge all of you to watch it. It shows two officers dealing with people in crisis over and over again, day in and day out, in plain clothes. They show up without their weapons and they talk to people. Those people are holding knives, guns. Some of those people are having the worst day of their life, but they spend time with them. They talk them down and they deescalate. And they are by far not the only people doing this. Look at all the people here tonight who work in this community and have offered solutions. Listen to them. I urge you to please care enough about Drew's life, his family, and the residents of your city to enact meaningful reform and change on behalf of the city that you were elected to serve. Thanks.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, 5.31, Sarah. She left? 5.32, John.
My name is John Guarini. I'm the chairman at the 9/11 Memorial Committee of Jersey City. Since I got sick a year and a half ago, I was in a hospital all that time. I had filed charges against the mayor and Christine Goodman violating our 501(c)(3), which is a nonprofit organization guided by the federal government. We are prohibited from political involvement. That means news. That means the mega. When we hold our ceremony, if we don't want you to be there to speak, you can't do it. That's what it's about. That was the protection we were guaranteed when we took it. And what it says in our documents that we gave to the tough guy mayor, we gave it to him to raise funds for design plan, construct, and maintain one or more memorials and events within the city of Jersey City, paying tribute to the victims, heroes, survivors, families of September 11 upon the tax of 2001. Any and all purpose, all purposes which its bylaws may establish, provided which purpose, due purposes are within the parameters of New Jersey nonprofit corporation. We were solely given this responsibility, not from Jersey City, from New York. 9/11 in New York. Nobody that's political speaks at their ceremony. Does anything at their ceremony except attend with respect. The respect here is we did our job for 19 years. We honored the pillars of the community, the fire department, the police department, the nurses, and all the people that gave of themselves to go on that waterfront with our memorial is now and helped and put people in their houses downtown and chest through all the church and took care of them. The Bemersky family, just like the Kadeen statue. We have the same protection and we were denied it. And the way we were treated was I was threatened that I was going to be arrested and beat up if we showed up at our ceremony after 19 years. 19 years. We never got a dime from Jersey City and all the money we received.
Thank you, John.
From private donors. And I'm asking you now
Thank you, John.
And desist from that memorial. And the only one out there who deserves to go there is
Thank you, John.
Gianni, because he's
John, your time is up.
During 9/11.
Our next speaker.
And thank you for your time.
Thank you. 5.33, Crystal. 5.33, Crystal. 5.34, I believe he left. Jay, he spoke earlier. 5.35, Isaac.
It's good here. All right. Hi, every council, my name is Isaac Jimenez. I'm addressing the council after kind of one of the most interesting city council meetings I've ever been to. Just want to make note of all of the different interests in the room and how Jersey City is a melting pot of interests. Uh, and the people in front of us today are somehow poised with representing and democratically deliberating on those interests, but they really don't have the power. So I really want to address the people behind me, um, the working class people in Jersey City that have seen for decades, um, a misuse of a misuse of the offices, of the resources, of the specter of this Golden Door City, this um West Bank city that is supposed to be so great. I just also want to say first and foremost, justice for Drew Washington, who was murdered by the Jersey City Police Department. He was murdered by the Jersey City Police Department. All right? And there's still no reason, I, I don't know, but I, I maybe the council can give a reason as to why the the tape is not released yet. And someone was just telling me Roberts Rule of Order, someone can make a motion and even make a symbolic resolution on the council that the Jersey City Council supports releasing the footage, that we, we, we demand the footage is released because the people need to know what happened. We got accounts and we have a mayor coming out saying that this is what happened and making an early determination. But we know we can't believe the mayor for many reasons. The failure to steward an RFP is a failure to allocate the resources that were given to uh, the council to steward. It also makes me think um that we do not fail to steward resources um to protect tenants like in allocating the resources to get a right to council office up and running because we have the resources. Jersey City is rich, but it continues to allow developers and people with the means to skirt the law and skirt enforcement of the law. And so I hope that the people behind me come together and I hope that um we also think about all the unique interests that it's going to take and the coalition that it's going to take to create a new vision for this city and Jersey City. I, I see the last names on this list and I, I recognize so many of them and so many of them have a legacy in this city. But I think it's time we have a new vision for the city to really uh steward it into this post-Fulop era. Thanks.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, 5.36, Kevin. Kevin?
Good evening. Faulkner Act Hearing Number One. These hearings are designed to get key information on the record and are a direct result of the inaction of the council related to our calls for investigation. This can be cured at any time the council adheres to the Faulkner Act mandate to investigate. Our speeches today reflect what was known up until this moment. You or Mr. Baker may take action tonight, which will change what happens next. If that occurs, these speeches, having already been written, may serve as validation to your decision. I was asked to have our lawyer reach out to Corporation Counsel Peter Baker. They have since communicated. Mr. Baker has previously asked that we supply information to him so he can investigate. The reason we are not doing that is because the Faulkner Act requires the city council investigate and we are calling for an on the record public investigation, Justice Councilman-at-Large Rivera called for on the 11/28/2022 council meeting. The fact that the Faulkner Act squarely places powers of investigation with the city council is not in dispute, not even by Mr. Baker. This is something that even he doesn't have the authority to do. If I'm wrong, he's free to clarify. Setting the law aside for a minute, let's rely on common sense and logic. If the mayor is obligated to enforce the ordinance equally for all properties that are subject to rent control based on the clear language of the ordinance, and we have presented credible evidence that he or the director is not, you also have an ethical obligation to investigate. The Faulkner Act does not allow for your duty to be set aside because of the administrative process of any one case. In fact, if there is provable wrongdoing, an ongoing administrative process should have the benefit of the results of your investigation. How can one case prevent you from protecting other tenants from what we have clearly brought before you? If you need more information, well, then that's the reason for an investigation. We're not asking you for a ruling. We're asking you for a fully transparent, on the record investigation. We would fully support and participate in such an investigation. What kind of government would we have? What kind of government would we have if the gatekeepers, with the powers to investigate, sat on their hands while people continued to suffer? Let's return to the law and our hearing. The Faulkner Act could not be clearer. The council has an unequivocal duty to investigate credible allegations of misconduct and legal violations by city officials. Attempts to defer this obligation to the law department or administration contradict the act's intent. Before we proceed, is anyone among you willing to act on our calls from investigation into the selective non-enforcement of rent control, the prolonged delay of illegal rent petitions, acceptance of falsified landlord documents, lack of rent control enforcement in buildings which are already designated as rent controlled, Mayor Philip's social media censorship, or an alleged two deaths per month at a property connected via a financial agreement to the Jersey City Redevelopment Agency?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Our next speaker, 5.37, Jessica.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So today is the beginning of our new effort to create transparency related to the statutory obligations of the mayor in the city council under the Faulkner Act. I too will refer to my speech as part of a hearing, but I will share information that is unique to my speech as I always do. First, I want to recognize that Mr. Rivera mentioned feeling as though you were all in purgatory, unable to act and not wanting to misstep. And at previous meetings, Madam President, you expressed similar sentiments. I understand that save for Councilman Saleh, none of you have a legal background and so it's understandable why you would want to rely on Mr. Baker's advice. However, I believe this does not reflect what is in your best interest. The Corporation Council cannot absolve you of mandatory duties encoded in state law. Incorrect legal advice does not shield officials who fail to uphold clear statutory obligations. It would seem like this may be why a speaker at the last council meeting, who happens to be a lawyer and who's behind me, suggested you retain independent counsel. I'm a scientist, of course, you know that, not a lawyer, but it sounded like good advice to me. The council's reluctance to take action is directly leading to homelessness and unwarranted enrichment of landlords. It can be argued that but for your inaction with regard to the use of your investigational powers, hundreds of millions of dollars of harm to the tenants of this city would not be possible. I have always focused on my scientific career, but now I see I'm also fairly adept at understanding the law. I guess the situation is forcing some of us to acquire new skills. We've spent an enormous amount of time each and every day, week after week, for over a year, learning to understand the law and our rights. In many ways, I feel like we've learned a lot together as this process has unfolded, worthy of the efforts to create documentaries, as has been mentioned here before. Let's continue by discussing a New Jersey Supreme Court case involving a previously jailed Jersey City mayor, which relates specifically to the Faulkner Act. McGann versus Jersey City involved violations of the Faulkner Act's higher ethical standards. The court stated the act provides unprecedented flexibility in organizing municipal government. However, officials face removal or neglecting duties and must exercise powers properly. Refusing to investigate rent control enforcement is neglect. Preventing accountability and responsiveness, no legal advice absolves you of the statutory duty. The McGann case proves inaction provides, brings legal jeopardy under the Faulkner Act. We implore you to avoid his fate by adhering to your duty to investigate. I will close by pointing out we have clear proof under the law that we have been overcharged because of illegal rent collection according to Jersey City ordinance and New Jersey statute. I'm calling for an investigation.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, 5.38, Mel.
Hi. Yes, I'm Mel Wilson. I'm one of the residents of Portside. I'm here again to talk as usual about enforcing 260. But there's definitely a theme for tonight and what I can say, what I'm about to say equally applies to the other issues in the room today because I'm here to talk to you to seek justice. The law could not be clearer. You have an unequivocal duty under the Faulkner Act to investigate credible allegations of misconduct by city officials. Make no mistake, willful inaction in the face of mounting evidence is an abdication of your solemn oaths. Silence serves only to enable the powerful and further imperil the people you swore to protect. Do not underestimate the gravity of this moment. Your choices now will reverberate through history. Future generations will look back and they will know. There comes a time when caution must give way to courage, when comfort is eclipsed by conviction, when passive virtues yield to dutiful action. That time is now. There's too much at stake. Livelihoods, homes, rights endowed by laws centuries in the making. The social contract lies in tatters while we wait for your action. You were not elected to turn away from injustice. You were entrusted with powers to expose it so that justice may prevail, no matter who that foe may be. Though I implore you, summon the wisdom to see past fear, muster the fortitude to challenge corruption. Have faith that though the path is uncertain, truth lights the way. Your children are watching, your siblings are watching, your spouse is watching. Some of them work for the city too. Act in a manner that makes them proud. Let your conscience guide you, it already knows the way. Let's have some justice here for those of us who have been here many, many times and those of us here tonight on these new issues. It's a similar theme, like I said. We're all here seeking justice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, 5.39, Eric.
Good evening, council members. I'm giving this speech on behalf of hundreds of tenants who have been navigating the consequences of unattended rent control ordinance violations since we first spoke before you in November of 2022, when Madam President told all of us that she understood and that something needed to be done. Regrettably, the council's inactions have fostered an unlawful atmosphere under the Faulkner Act, which explicitly mandates that the council investigates all government-related complaints. We have observed selective enforcement of rent control and acceptance of falsified documents leading to illegal rent collection. In addition, numerous tenant petitions outlining illegal rent charges have been left unaddressed for over 200 days, just for two petitions alone. That is more time than it took Dinah Hendon to respond to over 100 petitions. And at that time, Madam President expressed that the delay was not okay. Madam President conveyed that being overworked was not even a good enough answer, that something needed to be done. This was said to applause. And here we are, many months later, and the situations couldn't be worse. The two petitions that remain unanswered only posed one question each. It was essentially, "Arecto Richardson, has our landlord, Equity Residential, provided proof that the original owner of 100 Warren and separately 155 Washington Street filed a claim of exemption to rent control at least 30 days prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for each respective property? Yes or no?" He was then asked to kindly either respond with, "One, proof of the timely filings of claims of exemptions to rent control for these buildings, or two, his lawful determinations." Arecto Richardson was also supplied with two statements from Dinah Hendon herself, including her wet ink signature, which accompanied those statements, subject to punishment. Here again are two sworn statements from Dinah Hendon, issued exactly one year ago, as of yesterday. Portside was not the owner at the time the CEO for 100 Warren was issued in August 1992. And evidently, the owner at that time did not apply for the exemption. And to date, no letter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, 5.40, Tara.
Good evening, thank you. Good evening, council members. I come before you tonight to add my voice to the urgent calls for this council to uphold the legal duty under the Faulkner Act. Your continued failure to investigate credible allegations of rent control violations contravenes the act's clear investigatory mandate. Public records reflect numerous tenant complaints alleging conflicts of interest, negligence, misconduct and willful selective non-enforcement of rent control laws. By disregarding these serious allegations, you directly breach your mandatory investigatory duties under the Faulkner Act. As elected representatives, you have an obligation to the people of Jersey City to enforce the law without exception. Turning a blind eye to unlawful activities betrays the public trust and enables the deprivation of tenants' rights. The Faulkner Act unequivocally requires you to thoroughly investigate all government-related complaints. Your persistent inaction allows landlords to disregard rent control laws with impunity, leaving tenants unprotected. Jersey City deserves leaders who confront corruption rather than become complicit through inaction. I implore you to launch a comprehensive investigation immediately using your subpoena authority. Further delays undermine justice. The U.S. Supreme Court has ruled that officials who knowingly violate clearly established statutory or constitutional rights forfeit immunity. By disregarding the Faulkner Act, you expose yourself to significant personal liability under 42 USC 1983 and 1985. Given clearly established is the bar we must reach, let's explore that for a minute. Jersey City's filing requirement has been lost since 1987, as has the controlling state statute. Reasonable people can clearly see established rights being violated. Your peers in other cities have consistently demonstrated that they understand these laws. Willful ignorance is indefensible. I urge you to seek outside counsel immediately to fully assess your legal risk. Do you truly want to gamble that a court will rule that you didn't reasonably understand these statutory rights are being violated, especially when many of you have confirmed your understanding in this very room on the record? Calling for an on the record public investigation into the selective non-enforcement of rent control. It would be difficult to find a case in the history of this earth where a government entity had more constructive notice than the city council related to activity they are charged with investigating. Similarly, I doubt any government entity that could be the subject of litigation or the members of a government body who could be subject to personal liability have ever given, been given so much notice. More delay will mean more on the record liability. Investigate.
Our next speaker, 5.41, Suzanne.
Hello again, council. As we've all just heard, our administrative process should benefit from the result of your investigation. I also want to state clearly and on the record that we are not asking you to rule on our case or to interfere with any administrative process. We are asking you to investigate issues that affect every tenant of Jersey City, not even limited to rent control. An administrative process that is flawed such that every tenant that would go through it is subject to issues your investigation could resolve is why we continue to plead for your involvement. The Rent Leveling Board may yet enforce the ordinance in October or we will eventually win in court, hopefully standing shoulder to shoulder with the city in defense of the enforcement of the law. But that would still result in everyone who comes after us facing the same unaddressed problems. This is why we must all call on your legal obligation, not to help us or to help a one-off case, but to fix problems every tenant is facing in this city. We have divided up the many thousands of pages of evidence our teams have accumulated such that we can conduct hearings at every council meeting over the next few months on a wide variety of topics. This can stop if you choose to act according to your Faulkner Act mandated duty and we will immediately partner with you for as many on the record public investigations as is required to address what we can continue to discover. To date, your non-action has created an environment by which we have been able to uncover so many issues that warrant investigation, many have nothing to do with rent control. It is important for you to understand that were you to investigate per hour requests starting many months ago, we would have thanked you and moved on. This can stop at any point in time the mayor would like to. Obviously, I don't say this to condone any improper behavior, but from a practical perspective, the longer he takes to address the selective, selective non-enforcement of rent control, the longer we will all spend time together trying to figure out why this continues to be permitted. And before you go on, Jersey City is, it stands out as a sore thumb for not enforcing the ordinance. When you have hoboken other cities around Jersey City enforcing rent control because of clearly stated laws, it is disgusting what the city continues to allow to happen and you all have allowed it to happen because you have not set up an investigation. As these hearings continue, I expect the landlords who may not want us to publicly inform their tenants of certain facts may also have an interest in encouraging our mayor to get involved. We will begin introducing specific landlords and relevant facts to these hearings. If the landlords have as much power as it seems they do, we will simply recruit them to our cause or significantly help their tenants, whichever happens first. Landlords, if this prospect concerns you, I will save you the Google search. You can have this stopped by emailing a person who is responsible, Philip@JCNJ.org.
Thank you.
Next speaker, 5.42, Sonia.
Good evening. I want to start off by saying that it's super hard to follow all this. My deepest sympathy goes to all of Drew's people who are here tonight. And it's unbearable to witness this, really. But I also do think that this is about a common theme, as Mel just said. It's about your non-action and your refusal to take responsibility for justice and for your people. Two things are also important for me tonight. I wanted to give you some more details on how Mayor Philip keeps violating the First Amendment. On September 7th, the day we met here last time, he posted proudly about the Bayfront Development. We heard a lot about that today too. Underneath his post, you can read right now, I just checked it again, that 43 comments were made. When you click to read them, two show up, naturally because most relevant is pre-selected under his posts, all his posts. Plus, the statement, "Most relevant is selected," so some comments may have been filtered out. When you then select all comments, guess how many show up? Three. "The mayor and his aides have filtered out forty comments, forty concerns of people like us, for his own profit. To this day, it's utterly shocking to me that you all allow this. Free speech of the people of your town and state is suppressed by the mayor. We told you months ago, you know it and you're not doing anything about it." Which brings me to my second point. You are well aware that we ask you to start official investigations. We are doing so right now again. Suppression of free speech is just one of them. We also have asked you to help you to get our rights executed for over one and a half years now. During this ridiculously long time, we barely got a reaction, not to mention an action from you. That's why we were excited for a tiny moment when you called Peter Baker back into the room last time. We were also a little more excited when you called Kevin to the speaker's desk here. We were excited because we thought you wanted to have a conversation finally. We might have even thought that you wanted to do something. Well, our excitement was extinguished on the spot when Kevin was barred from responding. You ordered a citizen who has been standing up for people's rights for almost two years to a speaker's desk to not let him say a word. This shows me very clearly who you are. It shows me you feel superior to your people, that you feel immune to anything, that you feel above the law. Maya Angelou said, "When someone shows you who they are, believe them the first time." We unfortunately didn't do that. Believe us the first time, you know who we are. We will follow through with this. No filing, no exemption.
Our next speaker, 5.43, Judith.
Judith Fury Rogers, senior citizen, apartment 3A, 100 Montgomery. It is urgent. 100 Montgomery requires a 100 Montgomery requires a professional, independent mold and asbestos inspection by a state EPA-licensed inspector. Also, every tenant deserves a urine test for mold exposure. 100 Montgomery is Paulus Hook Towers, also known as PH Residential, and in 2023 is now known as the Montgomery. Why all the names? Does this have anything to do with the tax abatement? The name of the owner on the county property assessor's office is PH Residential. The letterhead, new leases, rent bills, rent statements, the Montgomery. The United Corporate Service is the registered agent who handles 100 Montgomery compliance. Do they know they are doing business under the Montgomery NPH Residential, which is affordable housing, HUD? Did Paulus Hook Towers, AKA PH Residential, AKA the Montgomery, receive any COVID help? Did the DCA award PH Residential, AKA Paulus Hook Towers, funding for affordable housing units? 100 Montgomery stopped renting units, affordable units, in 2020. Did the owners use PH Residential funds to gut all the empty units and convert them into luxury apartments? The building structure at 100 Montgomery is a mess. The only person who has reached out to me to help me has been Councilman Solomon. I need help. I can't take a shower, and now I can't go in my building, in my unit, without a mask. Someone needs to help me. I'm a senior citizen, and I need help. I need an inspector in my apartment so I can live. I have worked for a nonprofit and helped the community all my life.
Thank you. Our next speaker, 5.44, Joel.
NJ Statute 40-69A32 relating to the mayor council plan of municipal governance reads in part, "Any legislative and investigative function assigned by the general law to the governing body shall be exercised by the council." NJ Statute 40-69A32 relating to, oops, I might have that misquoted here, but the investigative power informs us that a municipal council may require any municipal officer in its discretion to prepare and submit sworn statements regarding his official duties and the performance thereof, and otherwise to investigate the conduct of any department, office, or agency of the municipal government. We've been imploring you, the members of the Jersey City Municipal Council, to do just that. Investigate the operation of the landlord tenant office since November 2022. Unfortunately, this investigation puts you at odds with the corporation council, whose office clearly has been advising the landlord tenant office and rent leveling board. Therefore, it's imperative that you, the council, engage independent legal counsel to guide your duty to investigate the obvious inconsistent actions of the landlord tenant office and rent leveling board. This is important. The conflict of interest inherent in this is obvious to all, and Corporation Council surely recognizes that its office cannot ethically advise you, the municipal council, in your public investigation of the landlord tenant office, whom it has already been advising. I'll repeat my comments from last meeting. NJ Statute 40-69107 reads in part, "Any officer or employee who willfully fails to perform his duties shall be guilty of a misdemeanor." No investigation has led to a pattern of no enforcement, at least against large corporate landlords in Jersey City. Tonight, I've heard over and over again, councils' ordinance that you all have passed and your predecessors have passed and enacted are not enforced. Jerry McCann just talked about millions, if not billions, of dollars in lost revenues due to the failures of the assessor's office, or malfeasance, perhaps. Again, no investigation leads to no enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, 5.45, Erin.
Good evening, council members. My name is Erin Kent. First, I want to say in recognition of the situation with Drew, you can viscerally feel the pain and grief in the air tonight. How many times do you need to hear the same "please" over and over? It's up to you to do something, please. Censorship is advertising paid by the government. That's not my line. A famous film director said it, but I think it's a pretty valid sentiment in light of the issues we're discussing tonight. As others have mentioned, I've become aware that Stephen Fullop regularly censors social media comments in an effort to sanitize his pages of any critical or controversial subject matter. Forty-three people commented on September 7th's post about the Bayfront Development, and at the present moment, we can only see two comments, technically three when you filter to all comments. Where did everybody go? According to Facebook, the remaining 41 comments were irrelevant and therefore hidden for our convenience. So we can extrapolate that 96% of the comments on that post were made for what? Fun? Thankfully, we can see the most of the very relevant, very important comments that people made about his double rainbow post two days ago, however. You might remember reading Fahrenheit 451 in school, a book about the perils of censorship in a free democratic society. Even as children, we were taught that censorship was a fundamental violation of our rights. But we are adults, and we are not just talking about censoring on social media accounts here. We're talking about censorship, quite casual and blatant, of laws that govern our right to stop unconscionable and illegal rent increases. So to return to that quote from the beginning, censorship is advertising paid by the government. Censorship on your social media accounts is having the opposite of its intended effect. It's only serving as advertising, or let's call it indirect admission, of things this administration wants to hide. It's like when I say, "Don't think of a pink elephant," but now all you can think of is a pink elephant. Just because the comments are hidden and the laws are ignored doesn't mean they aren't there. Actually, the big fat pink elephant in the room, one that isn't going away. It's one that isn't going away, just like everyone here standing next to me won't either. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, 5.46, John.
Good evening, council members. I'm here today to shed light on disturbing inaction by Director Richardson regarding lawful tenant petitions citing rent control violations. On February 8th, Director Richardson invited tenants to submit new petitions for his review. He assured them he would provide a fresh determination, as is his sole authority. He provided permission for this invitation of his to be announced at the February 8th, 23 city council meeting by Kevin Weller, which did occur. Two tenants promptly filed clear, concise petitions on February 13th, 23, one for 100 Warren Street, one for 155 Washington Street, asking a simple question to confirm whether their landlord had provided the legally required exemption proofs. Since Mr. Richardson's invitation welcoming new petitions and the submission of two such new petitions, this council publicly asked Peter Baker if Director Richardson could put forward his own determination related to newly submitted petitions, and Mr. Baker on the record confirmed that Mr. Richardson is the only person with that authority. Director Richardson received a reminder with a copy to Mayor Fullop on March 14th, one month after we received the two single-sentence petitions. That's two single sentences. Yet now, over 200 days later, Director Richardson still has not supplied his determination despite properly receiving these petitions per official processes. The landlord was given months to respond after being properly served yet provided no information whatsoever. In February, Director Richardson indicated that if the clearly established timeframe to respond ran out, the landlord would be stuck with his findings. It couldn't be clearer that timeframe long ran out related to the February 13th petitions. Director Richardson's silence now contradicts his vow of timely due process. It enables the pillaging of tenants' rights while imposing significant administrative burdens on the city. Faulkner Act obligates this council to investigate such willful neglect of legal duties by city officials. Director Richardson's failure to act warrants your scrutiny. His silence condones lawlessness. His inaction inflicts suffering. His delays obstruct justice. I urge you to exercise your subpoena powers to compel Director Richardson before this body. If he provided the determinations he promised, it could significantly reduce the city's administrative burden by allowing proper appeals. Tenants seek only Director Richardson's lawful determination as the sole authority on new rent control petitions. His decision is what we pleaded for. It is what principles of accountability and justice require. Through these hearings, we call on Director Richardson to either provide the requested proofs or issue his determinations without further delay. Uphold your oath. Uphold the law. Please investigate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, 5.47, Michelle.
Tonight, you'll be voting on Resolution 23-736, authorizing the settlement of Lubne Minier versus City of Jersey City at All, which undoubtedly requires Ms. Minier, the city's former CFO, to remain silent about her experience. But I have no such obligation, and I'd like to give her a voice and ensure that you hear her from her legal complaint. Around February of 2020, defendant Metro, then serving as business director, instructed plaintiff to complete an annual financial statement and, quote, "Plaintiff would have had to falsify financial records to perform as instructed by defendant Metro." This quote reveals a deeply troubling directive suggesting a potential breach of the law and ethical standards. In the following quotes, Ms. Minier's commitment to upholding the law and her ethical duty is evident. Quote, "I specifically objected that it was illegal to report false cash positions," and, quote, "Plaintiff refused to falsify financial information." Finally, quote, "Plaintiff was terminated," and quote, "Defendant Metro told plaintiff he was unhappy that she had contacted DLGS. The timing of her termination immediately following her contact with state authorities raises valid questions about Mr. Metro's intentions and political retaliation, potential retaliation. These are serious allegations, and there'll be no trial. Instead, you're being asked to approve the resolution settlement of $325 on top of the already approved $150,000 used to defend John Metro. $475,000 of taxpayer funds is being used to perhaps not so much remove the question of whether the city would have prevailed in the case, but to remove the potential of Ms. Minier providing damaging testimony regarding how the finance office operates. Let's revisit abatements and the fact that for decades, the city has willingly been accepting pilots that are comprised and part of profits from rents that have been illegally charged to tenants due to selective nonenforcement of rent control, all while some well-known bad actor landlords did not submit their annual audited financial statements as required." Is now silenced? I am not, and I have information that warrants an investigation into the finance department per the Faulkner Act. I am requesting an investigation.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, 5.48, Cameron. Thank you. Next speaker, 5.49, Jonah.
My name is Jonah Henkel. I'm here with the Hudson Bergen Club of Communist Party, USA. I'm also here as a resident of Jersey City, a part of this community, and as someone who suffers with bipolar disorder. Like many here today, I am outraged and disgusted. This body has failed to protect the public interest of this community, and someone like myself is having a mental health crisis, they cannot rely on emergency services in Jersey City to help them. In fact, that very call for help could end their life. I was in one of Hudson County's public psychiatric hospitals earlier this year, and I can tell you that our public services are failing us. They're failing our black brothers and sisters in the hospitals, our homeless brothers and sisters in the hospitals, it's our disabled brothers and sisters, and our poor and working brothers and sisters. There has been a massive influx of wealth in Jersey City in my lifetime, and it's not reflected in improvement in the public services for our poor and working families. We are here today to hold this body accountable and to demand justice for Andrew Washington III. So I ask, what will be done to make sure this never happens in our city again? Release the body cam footage. Justice for Drew.
Thank you.
Next speaker, 5.50, Lawrence. Not here. 5.51, Charles. 5.52, Dana.
Dana Patton, and I'm here to support the family of Andrew Washington III. Drew needed help, and instead, he was murdered. And that's not just a failure of one police officer, but of entire city government, a failure of policy, budget, and political will. When hundreds of us called to ask for just $5 million to be moved from police to youth and health services, many of you said no. We demanded a program for mental health professionals to respond to calls. Two years later, it's not implemented. I spent more than a decade going to police meetings, hearing over and over and over that most things residents call the police for, the police can't solve. A lie we've been told for generations that costs us a third of our budget is that the only thing our government can offer us when someone needs help is for a person with a gun to show up. When we ask for things residents need, the answer is always zero sum. We, the residents, can either have anti-violence programs that start with pre-K, or we can help teenagers involved in violence now. We can either have affordable housing in Bayfront, or we can have tax money for schools. But no one presents zero sums to the companies and developers who profit from us. There was no zero sum for SciTech City. They got the land and millions, while billionaires sit on their board. Less than 1% of Jersey City public school kids will ever see the inside of that, and that's at best. There was no zero sum for a French museum that in no way addresses the needs of our people. The city can't say they care about what happened to Drew but not find money to pay for medical interventions. They can't say we feel for his family but then refuse to compensate them for their pain and suffering when it is the very least that we can do now. Last week, a woman by Jewett called 911 for a man suffering on the sidewalk in front of her home, convulsing, moaning in distress. She said this happens a lot on her block. She asked for an ambulance to come, and 30 minutes later, no one had shown up. When she called back, she was told, "They won't send an ambulance until police come first and evaluate." Police officers are not medical experts. None of us asking for medical help in Jersey City should wait to be evaluated by a police officer to determine what help we need, but especially not black men with mental health disorders who are at the intersection of statistics on police killings. To the community members who are listening, who rallied outside or spoke here tonight, please join one of the groups that were here. Build more unity, Jersey City Anti-Violence Coalition, Jersey City Together, DSA, anyone organizing with discipline for justice. Join us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, 5.53, Ryan. Next speaker, 5.53, Ryan.
My name is Ryan Heisinger. I'm a resident of Ward C and have been for over a decade now. I'm also a licensed social worker. I want to speak about Andrew Jerome Washington III, who, as you know, was killed by Jersey City police while experiencing a mental health crisis. He was killed when he needed help. Here are the demands of the family and community. Immediate release of the body cam footage to the public. Release the details of who made the call to enter the home. Immediate implementation of the crisis intervention policy approved a year ago and an explanation of why it wasn't put in place immediately. A direct apology from Mayor Steven Fulop to the family for the disrespect to the family and community and direct monetary compensation to the family. I'm well aware that you and this body cannot release the footage or release the details, but you can publicly advocate for their release. You can publicly call for Mayor Fulop to apologize for his careless decision to say this killing was justified before it was even investigated. You can find ways to support these demands. But I also want to take a step back. As many of the speakers have shared tonight, this type of inhumanity and brutality has been going on for longer than any of us can remember. Mothers, nephews, neighbors in need, beaten, shot, and killed by people whose job is ostensibly to serve and protect them. And at a certain point, you all who hold purse strings have to start asking yourselves, is throwing more and more money at police actually leading to public safety? And if it's not, you have a responsibility to start moving around some funds and directing them toward programming and resources that do. Justice for Drew.
Next speaker, 5.54, Anna Marie.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Council President and Council Members of Jersey City. My name, my name is Anna Maria Hill, and I'm the Deputy Director for 32BJ, the labor union that represents office cleaners, security officers, airport workers, and so on. I was here earlier today with about 17 of the 27 workers that cleaned this building along with other buildings in the Department of Public Works. They would have been here right now, but they start work at 6:00 in the morning, so they had to go back home. Many of them came here with their children out of fear of what would happen to their jobs. Two weeks ago, at the last meeting, one of my colleagues, Elena, spoke, and you guys tabled the resolution that would affect their jobs. I am here today to talk a little bit more about that resolution and what's happened since then. The workers that I'm talking about are workers that live in Jersey City. They clean this building with pride. They take their children to the schools. And with their jobs that they have, they provide housing, they provide food for their families, and they have healthcare for themselves and their families so that they could see doctors. On Monday of this week, we met with Assistant Business Administrator Peter Horton. We also met with attorney John McKean, Director of Division of Recycling, who oversees this contract, Sonia Dublin, and Assistant Director Jose Cantaro, who also oversees all of this. I am in conversations with Sonia about this contract, and we've had good progress. But it's still, we're cautiously optimistic about what's going to happen with them. We've agreed to ensure that some of the workers who will lose their jobs will remain employed by the city as floaters, while others will be placed on a recall list to call vacancies as they appear. We're glad that we've made some progress, and so we ask council to continue to work with us to ensure the workers in question don't lose their jobs. There are many details yet to be ironed out, but we're hoping that we can work together and ensure that these workers continue to provide services to these buildings. We understand that you'll be voting on the Resolution 23-740 to award the cleaning contract to Tux tonight. Because of the city's commitment and the progress we've made, we support the award of this contract. But we just want to make sure that we continue to work together and ensure that these workers are not displaced, and that can only happen with your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Next speaker, 5.55, Yimbeli. Not here. Thank you.
He's not speaking.
Okay. 5.56, Adam. 5.57, Summit. Not here. 5.58, Elena.
Hi, good evening, City Council.
Good evening.
My name is Elena Little, and I'm a resident of Jersey City. Like so many others tonight, I'm here because Andrew Washington should be alive today. My heart goes out to his family and loved ones, and I'm here tonight to show my solidarity. This is a family who did everything they could to help their loved one in a mental health crisis. They called for medical help time and time again. Again, they were trying to get him help. When the police arrived, his aunt begged them repeatedly not to use lethal force. So this is not only heartbreaking, but it's also infuriating because you know as well as I do that over a year ago, Jersey City announced plans, and you passed it for a community crisis response center with trained mental health professionals as first responders so that mental health crises such as this one could be safely de-escalated rather than met with force. And today, that still has not been implemented. So we are demanding an immediate implementation of that program. In fact, I think it should be called the Andrew Jerome Washington III Program so that his name is never forgotten. We also demand that the city council advocate for release of the body cam footage. We demand answers as to how the decision was made to enter the apartment. And we demand answers as to why the family was so disrespected that they were not informed till hours after the fact that Andrew Washington had been fatally shot. Per public records analyzed by NJ.com in their force report, a black Jersey City resident is nearly five times more likely to have police force used on them than a white Jersey City resident. And according to the Treatment Advocacy Center, people with untreated mental illnesses are 16 times more likely to die during a police encounter. Both of these numbers are unacceptable. Drew's life mattered. Black lives matter. And mental health is real, and it should not be a death sentence. Those of us who love someone with a mental illness are left in an impossible predicament. If you're worried they're going to hurt themselves during a crisis, is there anywhere that is safe to call, anywhere that won't run the risk of them being killed? So this is a question that Jersey City needs to answer as soon as possible before more lives are lost. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, 5.59, Kealan.
I'm a bit taller. Hi. Going to stay? Okay. My name is Kealan Scott. I'm from Bergen County. I would like to start out with a bad joke. What would you call a bee that lives in America? A US bee? So now I got that bad joke out the way. My name is Kealan Scott. I'm a victim of police brutality as well. I was attacked in Fort Lee, New Jersey, as well as my wife, while my brother-in-law's body was still there. And we just found out that he died, and his body was there, and the coroner wasn't there yet. And we were beaten, and we've been under the foot of the tyrannical US government since. We have an attorney. Don't worry about that. This country was founded in order to escape governmental tyranny and with the specific design to avoid it at every cost. Because of this governmental tyranny, the country was designed with the very real fear that our own government can and will become tyrannical if not kept in check. Ironically, this country has long become exactly what it used to fear, the land of tyrannical authoritarian ideologies and reality. The only ideology this country has maintained is its racist nature. This is supposed to be the land of liberty. Liberty is defined as the state of being free within society from oppressive restrictions imposed by authority on one's way of life, behavior, or political views. This country and every municipality in it is absent of that very liberty. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. That whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its power in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. Police brutality, mass incarceration, justice system misconduct, our voting system, and a handful of other violations are the evidence, no actual proof, that we have failed as a country and are worse than what we escaped from over 300 years ago. What a shame. Justice for me, justice for all victims of governmental brutality, and most importantly today, justice for Andrew Washington. Bad joke again. What do you call an authoritarian potato? A dictator. Bye.
Thank you.
Next, next speaker, 5.60. Dario. Not here. And last speaker, 5.61, James. I don't see him.
I don't see.
Okay, that concludes our public speaking portion of the meeting. Council President.
Yes.
I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yeah. What I would like to say, earlier in this session, we had to pause because of a situation that happened when emotions ran high. What I would like to explain to the public, especially those who are watching, there is a sunshine law that you can't really pass that podium, that rail. You really can't. And because I know this is a hot topic, I always respect people for speaking. They can speak. I believe in that. Let me, um, see, you know what? You need to stop. I respect you, so you need to just respect that. That's what I'm saying, because you have innocent people in here. And when people are saying that they are angry and you don't know, you don't know the people. Just like people storm the Capitol too. It's no saying that no one won't storm this chambers. We cannot say it won't happen. So I always try to calm the situation down so things like this won't happen. But don't think it cannot happen, because you know what? You really don't know the person sometime who you're sitting next to. You don't know the tension they're under. You don't know the stress they're under. But it's our responsibility as a council to make sure everybody comes in this room safe and everybody leaves out safe. That's what we are supposed to do. So all we ask is that you respect everyone. I don't know. I don't know everybody that come in this chamber, and neither do you. You don't know everyone that comes, but you want to make sure everybody leaves out safe. So even in your anger and even with your emotions high, let's just respect each other and do not pass that podium again. Just don't do it, because you're coming too close to the council. You're coming too close to the city clerk and the recorder, and we don't know what will happen. All right? I just think that's fair. So at this time, I know I heard what the people say, and they wanted to know exactly what can we do? The only thing we can do as a council is send a resolution, all right, to the AG to ask them to release the tape. That's what we can do, and that's what we will do tonight. All right?
So council members, the law department uploaded the resolution to iCompass, and I'm going to read it into the record. Second, sorry. So it's item 10.34, Resolution 23-745. It's a resolution of the city council requesting the immediate release of all investigative materials and video footage relating to the August 27, 2023 shooting death of Andrew Washington III. Council members may have a motion to add item 10.34, Resolution 23-745 to the agenda.
Motion.
Motion was made by Councilperson Saleh, seconded by Councilperson Gilmore. On the motion to add 10.34, Resolution 23-745 to the agenda, Councilperson Ridley, Councilperson Prinzieri, Councilperson Bajiano, Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejees, and Council President Waterman. Motion carries eight zero with Councilperson Rivera absent to add item 10.34, Resolution 23-745 to the agenda. Okay, on to our petitions and communications. Any questions or comments on items 6.1 through 6.52? Hearing none. Any questions or comments on Office Communications 7.1 through 7.4? Any questions or comments on Reporter Directors 8.1? On to our claims and addendums, number one and number two. Council members are going to be taking a vote on claims and addendums, number one and number two. Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri. Councilperson Bajiano. Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
I just want to say we need more vegan options. I vote aye.
Councilperson Dejees and Council President Waterman. Claims and addendums, number one and number two are approved eight zero with Councilperson Rivera absent. On to our resolutions. Okay, council members are going to be taking vote on resolutions, items 10.1 through 10.11. Again, that's items 10.1 through 10.11. Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye for all.
Councilperson Bajiano. I can't hear you.
Staying on 10.6, aye on the rest.
Thank you. Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejees. And I believe Council President Waterman stepped out. Okay. So items 10.1 through 10.5 approved seven zero with council members Rivera and Waterman absent. 10.6 is approved six zero one with Councilperson Bajiano abstaining, and items 10.7 through 10.11 are approved seven zero with council members Rivera and Waterman absent. On to our next resolutions, items 10.12 through 10.22. Again, that's items 10.12 through 10.22. Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye for all.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye for all.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson Dejees.
Aye.
Council President still absent. Items 10.12 through 10.22 are approved seven zero. Councilmembers Rivera and Waterman absent. And to the balance of our resolutions, that's items 10.23 through 10.34. And that's all the late items from 10.30 to 10.34. Again, 10.23 to 10.34, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye for all.
Councilperson Bajiano. Councilperson Saleh.
Aye for all.
Councilperson Solomon.
No on 10.25, aye on all the rest.
Councilperson Gilmore. This is the balance from 10. 10.23 to 10.34.
I vote, um, aye on all but 25.
And your vote on 25?
No, aye on the rest.
Thank you. Councilperson Dejees. And Council President Waterman. Okay, items 10.23. Okay, items 10.23 through 10.24 are approved eight zero with Councilperson Rivera absent. Item 10.25 is approved six two with Councilmembers Solomon and Gilmore voting no. And items 10.26 through 10.34 are approved eight zero. Councilperson Rivera absent. May I have a motion to adjourn at 10:35 PM?
Motion.
Motion was made by Councilperson... Sorry, sorry, sorry. Let me do that before we do that motion. Wait, wait. Council President, you're voting aye on all? Okay, so let me just recap. Items 10.1 through 10.11 are, excuse me, items 10.1 through 10.5 are approved eight zero with Councilperson Rivera absent. Item 10.6 is approved seven zero one with Councilperson Bajiano abstaining and Councilperson Rivera absent. Items 10.12 through 10.22 are now approved eight zero. Councilperson Rivera absent. We did take the vote on 10, you were here for 10.23 through 10.34. So again, we have a motion to adjourn, and I'll make it at 10:36, and the motion was made by Councilperson Saleh. May I have a second? Seconded by Council President Waterman on the motion to adjourn at 10:36 PM. Councilperson Ridley. Councilperson Prinzieri. Councilperson Bajiano. Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon. Councilperson Gilmore. Councilperson Dejees, and Council President Waterman. Motion carries eight zero to adjourn at 10:36 PM with Councilperson Rivera absent. Thank you so much, everyone who is here and everyone watching at home. Remember, teamwork makes a dream work. Stay safe. Have a great night.